August twenty second, I'd like to call the meeting of the Sierra Madre City Council to order. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Edward Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Krebs was previously excused. Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Lowe.
Present.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Robert Parkhurst, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
It would be my pleasure, please. If you please, rise if you're able. And ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today, mine's more of a reflection than an inspiration. Maybe there's an inspiration in it, but I was putting this together on Sunday evening during the impacts of Hurricane Hillary. And I think maybe most of us have heard that the last time a tropical shore, a tropical storm came ashore in California was nineteen thirty-nine. And that storm killed a hundred people. This year, the hurricane dropped more than five inches of rain in our city in less than twenty-four hours. It's a record for the city for the month of August. Now that, put that in perspective, that's on top of the parade of storms that began just after Christmas of two thousand and twenty-two and lasted well into March. It's flooding large parts of California. That came after more than five years of drought in the state. And then just recently, between July first and July twenty-eighth, two hundred and forty-one highest maximum temperatures were recorded, two hundred and forty-one highest max temperature records were broken in the state. And this is just with one point one degrees of global temperature increase. According to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the UN body that is, that forecasts and calculates emissions, it's a group of scientists, they have forecasted that we are on track for an almost threefold warming of three point two degrees by the end of the century. A warming of this magnitude will significantly increase wildfires, excuse me, wildfires, increase water scarcity, reduce agricultural yield, and exacerbate heat-related illnesses. And that's one of the reasons why I focus my efforts here on council and outside of council on increasing supply of renewable energy provided to Sierra Madre and Southern California. In addition to advocating for the electrification of everything. I was really encouraged by Councilmember Caciotti's presentation at the July eleventh council meeting, as well as the discussion on getting the Tesla chargers by behind the tailor's market. Councilmember Caciotti was talking about all of the opportunities we've got to get valuable rebates on electric appliances. At the same time, I'm also encouraged by some of the latest statistics I've seen. For example, for the first time ever this year, solar investment is expected to surpass oil and gas investment. By two thousand and thirty-three, US solar capacity will be four times larger than it is today. And just this year, we're going to get the US as a whole, we're going to get twenty-three percent of our electricity from renewables. Switching from electricity to transportation, electric vehicle sales increased forty-seven percent in the US for the first half of two thousand and twenty-three. And those electric vehicles need batteries, and battery manufacturing increased one thousand percent between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three, and will increase another six hundred percent by two thousand and twenty-seven. This has created nearly eighty-five thousand jobs just in the last twelve months. And here in California, all electric vehicles were twenty-four percent of all car sales in the first half of two thousand and twenty-three. This, some analysts predict, will result in the closure of twenty-five percent of all gas stations by two thousand and thirty-five. Despite all this encouraging news, this very encouraging news, the IPCC has stated that global emissions need to peak by two thousand and twenty-five, and then decrease by forty-three percent by two thousand and thirty. So therefore, we all need to strive to dramatically reduce emissions. Our city needs to continue to lead by example. And I encourage my fellow council members to continue and expand our efforts to decarbonize. I encourage my fellow residents not only to hold us accountable, but to hold all of our elected officials accountable to reduce emissions in our state and our nation. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Some enlightening statistics there, thank you. So moving on to the meeting agenda, do we have any changes proposed for the agenda? Or do we want to, do we have a motion to proceed as is?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that on the, I have to get down to it. Public hearing number one, I think is what it is? Yes, since that was proposed by Councilmember Krebs, I think that we might want to, I always forget the right word, does it postpone it to a date certain?
Continue.
Continue it, thank you. Continue it for a date cer, to a date certain.
I think that's a good idea. So when we get to that point in the agenda, we will officially have a motion to continue it? Does that sound, sound fair?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, I think that's a good point. Any, any changes, other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of reading resolutions and ordinances by title only?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. All right, moving on to mayor and city council reports. I know we've been dark for a month, so I'm sure there's quite a bit to report out. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Please.
Over the break, I attended two transportation subcommittee meetings. We just started that subcommittee recently as a product of council deliberations earlier in the year. Our management analyst Carlson is heading those meetings. I am not a member, I am actually a liaison to the Transportation Subcommittee, as well as Councilmember Parkhurst, we're observers, we're not technically voting members of the committee. It's a good group, we've done, I compliment staff for recruiting a very broad cross-section of our citizens and commission members to staff this committee. And we're all, I think, really committed to seeing changes and meeting the challenges that we face on a number of fronts when it comes to transportation. Staff has asked me to share a few details about that committee. It meets every second and fourth Wednesday of each month in our conference room back here. The three focus areas in order, and the order is important. First thing we're trying to do is to move as quickly as possible to do improvements, to fill gaps for residents and visitors where we're now facing immediate issues. The second area is advocacy on behalf of residents and visitors with the regional transportation system, particularly metro. As you know, we're without bus service, and we're working on that. And finally, we're trying to put together an integrated long-term plan of transportation planning that try to brings all the various pieces that have anything to do with transportation kind of into one integrated plan that we can use for future activities on council, wherever we have things that might relate to transportation. This week, we will be reviewing, in fact, our next meeting is tomorrow night, we will be reviewing a complete street safety assessment, and we're going to fine tune that for internal and regional meetings, which we're coming, which are coming soon, and we're going to be meeting, I think, sometime in September with First Transit and Metro as a committee to be able to pick their brains and ask them questions about what they have to offer. If you want to communicate with the Transportation Subcommittee, because I know a lot of folks in the public are very much concerned about some of these issues, here is the email address. It is transportation@cityofsierramadre.com. That's transportation@cityofsierramadre.com. Those emails will come into staff, and they'll get out to all the committee members. This morning, I had my one-on-one meeting with Diane Russell of the Foothill Workforce Development Board in preparation for the September twelfth meeting of the Policy Board, of which I am vice chair representing this council. Diane indicated to me this morning that she would like to make a presentation to our city council about the board's workforce opportunities for our citizens. So I told her, at the end of tonight's meeting, I would make a request for the mayor to consider that for an item for a future agenda. And I intend to do so. And that is all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Who'd like to go next?
All right. So as usual, there were a number of Clean Power Alliance meetings. They did not go dark over the last four weeks. And there was two executive committee and two energy committee. The most reportable item coming out of that is that we had a solicitation for renewable energy, so a request for offers. And that resulted in a historic amount of bids. So more bids were received this time than have ever been received in Clean Power Alliance's history, which is overall a really good thing. We've got some short-term reliability concerns for next year, but everything after that, we're looking very strong, have lots of supply, lots of solar and lots of batteries. So that's really good. Attended the mayor's lunch back in late July, a really nice event. Fortunately, I couldn't stay as long as I would have liked, but appreciated all of the work that staff did and all the recognition of employees and their service here in the city. It was great to see everyone out there, it was a really nice day. I went to the ribbon cutting, the Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting for the organic juice dude. It was very nice. Eugene is fantastic, he runs a really good shop there. And if you haven't been, I highly encourage folks to go. He's got a lot to offer everybody. As community member Goss said, I'm also, I've attended the Transportation Committee and participating on that. There's not more that I can add to it, he did a phenomenal job of reporting out on that. And then on August first, I was, I attended National Night Out. We had a really good number of booths there. Fire Department, the Police Department, Fish and Wildlife were there. It was a really, really nice event. And I had a really good conversation with Mackenzie Rich. Mackenzie, she's a one-year, two-year employee for Fish and Wildlife, and is trying to take a really active role on wildlife in this city and on bears. I don't know if you have seen it, but today she was up on Allegria just north of Cannon, and they were trying to trap some of the bears in town. What I learned from her at the National Night Out is that bears five oh four and five oh nine, I want to say, they've lost their tags. So the bears that have been breaking in to many of the homes, and I think the mayor's going to give a more detailed report on that, they don't have tags right now, and they're trying to figure out who, what bear it is. They think it is probably a child of five oh fours. So you may see them out there in the community, if you do say hello, please express your support of them, because I think they're, I'm really impressed with what Mackenzie's doing and trying to support our community. And hopefully that she can help us address the bear problem. And like Councilmember Goss, this is going to be something that I'm going to request at the end of the meeting to have a follow-up on, and more about that at the end. And then finally, I went to the last movie night that we had, Top Gun: The Maverick. Such a wonderful evening, there's a good number of families out there. Really fun movie to watch, and want to thank staff, particularly Community Services Commission, for all of their hard work in setting those up. It's a great opportunity for people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Councilmember Lowe?
So a couple of things. I met with the Sierra Madre Chamber of Commerce back on seven nineteen for their quarterly brunch. They were giving their reports out on the Wisteria Festival and just the, some of the increases in costs and how they're going to, how they were going to navigate through their future. They also are going to update their website so we can encourage more business owners to be able to join our Chamber of Commerce, and they're going to revamp some of those things on their websites. I went to the mayor's lunch as well, it was a very nice, warm day, it was a great event, amazing tacos, great awards. Can't believe how many of our city employees have stayed with us for that long. It's amazing, it's so, it's been really exciting. National Night Out was also exciting and fun, great balloon display, it was fun, kids were running around, people were asking questions. It's great education, and again, Fish and Wildlife were there. Our new, I guess, relationship with Glendora and the, correct me on what the title is for the FSET?
FSET.
FSET, group where we go and help other cities, of which I guess we did today. Help with Glendora with more sensitive and higher level safety, it was really exciting. Then the Planning Commission has met twice since we were gone. One of the meetings I went to, we were approving more of the Stone Gate homes up on Juan Carter. The Planning Commission's doing a great job at making sure the massing is appropriate, sending certain things back and having them fixed. So those approvals seem to be moving on at a nice pace. And the last concert in the park was really great, it was the Sierra Madre Music School. So all the little kid bands were there, all the way from ages of like five or six all the way to the teenagers. They had an all-girls band, they had, you know, the small kids, and then they mixed it up a lot. They were fantastic, it was really fun. So that was really a great night. And then the library renovation presentation was also great. One great thing that they were asking about is our environmental resources groups were asking about what, how this building is being built with electrical ability to be powered. And what they were saying was that they're not able to do it on the existing structure of the library, but on the newer portion that will be built, they will be able to have solar at some point in the further. The grant does not cover anything to do with that, and we don't have the resources now, but the ability in the future will be there to include that. The citizens had great input, everyone seemed to really like the architectural design. And the only comments came down to the tweaking of the inside of the building and what they want to see in the different areas. But it was really great, and you could find that on our city library website if you want to see the plans. And last, we had the Sierra Madre Dodger Night. So that was exciting and fun. Thank you so much to Christina for putting that all together, and it was well-attended. It was a great time, and we had a great bus, we all went out together, and we got, we lost that night, but we had the most hits. So anyways, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. All right, time for my report, bear with me, it's a little long. I do have some talking points regarding bears, as Councilmember Parkhurst mentioned. So on July twentieth was the mayor's lunch with staff. It was a fantastic event, we met at the city yard. And it was a very warm summer afternoon. When I was asked, do you want to have a mayor's breakfast or mayor's lunch? That's when, it was really cold and raining all day, if you remember the spring, right? So I decided, let's do a lunch. Well, the heat caught up with us, but it was still, we were covered under canopies, the tacos were amazing. There was ice cream after the tacos. And I was able to acknowledge employees that had five-year, ten-year, and fifteen-year service tenure with us, so that was, that was great. And the department heads were able to acknowledge their staff as well. So it was a great event, really meant for the staff. I was honored to be there to spend time with the staff. Following the lunch on that same day, July twentieth, because some of our staff couldn't stay because they had things to do, they ran, they went over to the Hart Park House to help out with our senior community commission's bingo night, or bingo day, I guess it would be. And this was a special bingo day, and I ran over there to spend a little time at that bingo. And we had our police chief Barrientos calling, we had our fire chief Bartlett calling, I think city manager Reynoso, and firefighter Roosevelt were calling numbers as well. And prior to the bingo, I did, I was there for our police chief's presentation on safety, especially safety in regards to our seniors, you know, individuals knocking on doors, saying there's somebody else, these diversion types of robberies. It was a very comprehensive and good presentation, and I think a timely one by Chief Barrientos. So thank you, Chief, for that. On July twenty-fourth, there was a Library Board of Trustees Committee meeting. Updates were given by various groups associated with the library, as well as from our deputy director, Yunez, he gave an update on the progress of the renovation of the library. The trustees also voted to form what's known as a naming committee. And the reason for this naming committee is so all of the partners that are trying to raise funds beyond what we have, have a good understanding of what a named room or a named area does. Because we do have the Friends of the Library, we have the Foundation, we also have the city, and we want to make sure that there's a cohesive way to raise funds and let fundraisers or donors know what they can get out of giving us large donations to help, help our library. So I think that was a fruitful meeting. There was no COG meeting, we're dark in August and September, they will, August and July, they'll resume in September, so the COG has not been meeting. On July twenty-sixth was the meeting of the Directors of the County Sanitation District. I attended that, was a very light agenda for District Fifteen. We just approved the expenses of approximately twenty-five thousand for the month of April. There will be no meeting in August, they're dark, and we will resume on September twenty-seventh. As mentioned before, August first was National Night Out. It was hosted by our Sierra Madre Police Department in Memorial Park. The reason for National Night Out, and I think it's a great, it's a great event, is generally when people interface with police officers, it's under a stressful situation. And so what the National Night Out is trying to do is to get our residents and businesses liaising with our police officers in a fun environment rather than a stressful situation. So I think that was accomplished. We had a lot of community partners there, the Fire Department was in attendance, CERT was there, Fish and Wildlife was there, our library was there, it was great. I was able to give the opening remarks with Mayor Pro Tem Krebs in attendance and Councilmember Parkhurst. I did have to leave because it was my mother-in-law's birthday, so I miss Councilmember Lowe, I didn't, I don't know that we saw each other. But it was a great event. So I encourage you next year to go. There were bounce houses, there was face painting, there were carnival booths for the kids, it was a fantastic event. So it could be even better attended, so hopefully next year it will be. On August thirteenth, I had the honor of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for six scouts in Troop One Ten here in Sierra Madre out of St. Rita. Six of the scouts did attain the rank of Eagle. I was joined by county supervisor Catherine Barger, she gave some remarks. She was very impressed with what we're doing in Sierra Madre with scouting, and she presented the scouts with certificates of recognition, as did I. I was able to give some remarks and recognize those scouts. Few other things, I'd like to applaud our Public Works employees for dealing with our annual uptick in water leaks. As you know, the water mains tend to leak when it gets hot. There's a lot more, a lot more going on regarding water usage. And I think our Water Department specifically has been doing an amazing job of keeping up with that. Also, I'd like to applaud Public Works and Christensen Brothers for our downtown project. I'm sure you're all aware of it, we have the detours every day. Last week was the first day, was the first week of PUSD coming back, and Christensen Brothers and our Public Works Department worked with each other and made certain that the work hours were delayed. Because that first week of school, as many of you know, is very stressful when you're driving to and fro and trying to get your kids dropped off at three different schools like I do. So I was grateful that work was delayed in order for our residents to get, and people commuting to work, right? On that, on that busy, busy week. They're doing a fantastic job, the communications have been exemplary. I've seen some of the memos to the partners that are either businesses or the school. There was a school memo, our Public Works Department, especially Chris Domeno, has been sending out great memos informing our public of what's going on there. I'd also like to, once again, applaud Public Safety and Public Works for the work leading up to and following the tropical storm. Particularly the fire crew that was on duty during that time, they exercised some compassion and quick thinking regarding an incident that occurred because of the storm and the huge amounts of rain that fell that night. So there was an incident, they went above and beyond, and I'm grateful for that crew that we had on for the Fire Department that evening. Moving on to bears. So if you're watching public or social media, you're seeing a lot of pictures of bears, a lot of discussions on bears. So I'd just like to make a few comments regarding bears in the city of Sierra Madre. As many of you residents know, we passed Resolution two-three-twelve declaring the mismanagement of the local black bear populations a threat to public safety on April twenty-fifth of this year. On June sixth, the city of Lockeney out of Flint Ridge unanimously approved a resolution based on our resolution. The mayor saw our resolution, they're not having the kind of interactions that we are, to the volume we are, but they see a pattern, and they thought it was important to get the commission up in Sacramento's attention. So they aligned with us on that. Since then, I've heard from other city's elected officials that they're also having problems with wildlife mismanagement. It's not just bears, coyotes, and other types of wildlife from our neighboring cities. So now I want to make it clear that this council does not purport to be experts in wildlife management. We never said that. We do not make statements that the Department of Fish and Wildlife should take one path or another. Rather, in that declaration or in that resolution, we demanded the state of California's Fish and Game Commission to agendize this issue at their next meeting. Since they are the experts, they need to be the ones to find a solution. Our residents, for the most part, have been following all the rules and regulations set forth by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. The city has been meeting regularly with the DFW. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, kind of going back to your comments, the boots on the ground, they've been doing an amazing job. They can only do what's within the rules and policies that are set forth in Sacramento. And that's all they can do. And they've been doing a great job of communicating with us, communicating with our residents, having lots of education regarding that issue. So we cannot fault them for doing their job and doing it well. It's the policies that they're following that we're saying is the mismanagement here. Why am I bringing this up again? Well, as you know, there's been a sharp uptick in public safety. We call them public safety bears, specifically when bears enter homes. And I've got some figures for you. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were a hundred and six calls for service to the PD. Six of those calls involved a bear entering a home or a car. Two thousand and twenty-one, six of them. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were a hundred and thirty calls, so the calls went up. There were seventeen involving the entering a home or a car. So now for the sharp uptick. And I had to, I had to ask management analyst Carlson, please recheck your numbers on this. And he did. Since July first of this year, so one month and, up until Friday, one month and twenty days, there had been one hundred and twenty-two calls for service with thirty bears entering a home or a car. Thirty, within a month and twenty days. So something is changing. So I encourage our residents to remain vigilant right now, don't approach bears, especially those with cubs. If a bear's entered your home or car, do not corner that animal. Call the police immediately. Take pictures and document when it's all safe. And please do not feed the bears. As we pass the citywide ordinance prohibiting the feeding of wildlife, and fines may be issued. Haze the bears when appropriate. This is, we're told to haze the bears, but it gets a little difficult when you're not up against the mountain. I hazed a bear out of my yard and went to my neighbor's yard across the street and it jumped into a backyard of another neighbor where I know there's kids always playing in the backyard. And I thought, what have I done? So we have to be smart about when we're hazing. Again, I'm not an expert here, but it's not smart to chase a bear into a backyard where there are kids playing. So we have to make sure we're doing it when appropriate. Pick up your fruit litter and hold tight for those bear-proof cans that every resident will receive from Athens Services. If you feel that you're in imminent danger, please call 911. If you feel that there is a bear that is going to harm you or somebody else. I think we have a slide up with some important pieces of information. If there is danger anytime, obviously, call 911. We also have 626-355-1414. That's the normal line to the Police Department. If there's a bear, mountain lion, coyote in a structure after the fact, please call that for any of that type of interaction. Also, please report to wildlife.gov. And finally, we've set up a dedicated email address for these types of things as well, where you can also report. I want to stress, this email address is not a substitute for 911. But this email address is wildlife@cityofsierramadre.com. Report all incidents to the city for data collection. I encourage you to take photographs if there is an incident. And so we could give as much data that we can to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then they can then talk with the Commission of Fish and Game in Sacramento to see if we can start talking about these policies. Because we're not Mammoth Lakes, we're not Lake Tahoe, we're Sierra Madre, and yes, we have one border that's a wildlife interface, but we're surrounded by cities all around. So it's a little different. And we feel as though the Fish and Wildlife Commission needs to take a more regional and local approach to see what's going on. We're welcome to be the pilot program for them, please. If you know anybody with the Commission, please let them know that we're trying to do everything we can and liaise with them to make sure that we are keeping our residents safe and the bears safe. These bears are big, beautiful, majestic animals. And it's a shame to reduce them to trashhounds. They become, once they're habituated, that's all the, according to the, it's not me, it's according to the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Once they become habituated to eating trash and being urbanized, there's no going back. That's all they know, and they're teaching their cubs to do the same. So it's not only a public safety issue for residents, it's also not fair to the bears. We have a bear, I know it's a grizzly bear, but we have a bear on our flag. We're very proud of our bears, and we should continue to honor these bears. But having bears habitually eat trash, I think, is no way to honor them. Thank you for your time. Usually I have some announcements regarding things that are happening throughout the next couple of weeks. I don't have any of those. I do believe that, I think it's PD is having boba, smoothies. Smoothies, Fire?
Public Safety.
Public Safety. That's going to be tomorrow at, Captain Amos, do we know the time? At My Friend's Cafe.
Yes, tomorrow, My Friend's Cafe, from 11:00 a.m. to about 1:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m. to?
One.
One, okay. My Friend's Cafe, smoothie with Public Safety.
Yes, Police and Fire.
Yes, Police and Fire, great. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment for items not on the agenda. If you have not already, please get a yellow card in the back of the room, fill that out. We have a public participation code of conduct. I usually read this whole thing, but since I've talked so much, I'm just going to abbreviate. Basically, if you are disrupting the meeting and we let you know you're disrupting it and you disrupt again, we're going to have to ask you to leave chambers. But with that, you have three minutes now to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Please keep the three minutes, and please give us your name and your residence. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is David Gordon.
Good afternoon, David Gordon, Sierra Madre Playhouse. I'm sure the council will be very happy to know officially that the Sierra Madre Playhouse was awarded by Assemblywoman Judy Chu, Not Profit of the Year for her congressional district. Given the size of her congressional district, I think this is a significant honor. And we're very proud and very grateful that we have received it. We are having a special premiere of "The Right Is Ours", a musical about suffragettes, about the friendship between Susan B. Anthony and Elizabeth Cady Stanton. It's a musical, and it is taking place beginning on September the 8th with a special gala performance by invitation only. And it's going to be attended, at least she's going to be there at the beginning, we don't know if she's going to stay, by Judy Chu. And I'm very grateful to the mayor, who's going to be coming along to welcome her. And also, Councilmember Goss is also going to be attending, as is the city manager, and their spouses, or spice. So that is the beginning of a season of five weeks, "The Right Is Ours". Preceding that, this coming weekend, we are having a first-ever silent film festival in the Sierra Madre Playhouse. The Playhouse started its life 99 years ago as the Wisteria Picture House. On February the 2nd, 1924, we'll be celebrating our hundreds next year. So in honor of our past as a silent picture cinema, we're having this two-day film festival all about the films made in Hollywood just before and just after the passage of suffrage for women, at least white women, federally, which, as you all know, took place in 1920. Actually, it so happens that the 103rd anniversary to the day is on August the 26th, the first day of our silent film festival. So please tell all your friends about it. There are five sessions, each one with a major silent film classic, concert by the accompanist, all accompanied by one of the leading silent film pianists, Frederick Hodges. So please do your best to come at least to one of those sessions and tell all your friends about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And yes, that is a huge honor, Nonprofit of the Year for our congressional district. I didn't report out on that. Mayor Pro Tem Krebs went in my stead, and I was going to let her report out on it when she returns. But congratulations on that honor.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Jorge Rivera.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jorge Rivera. I'm the executive co-director of a nonprofit organization serving the San Gabriel Valley called the Healing and Justice Center. We believe that if we're going to build strong, healthy communities, we need to have relationship strengthening and healing approaches at the center of all that we do. We do, some of our services include, like, tenant counseling hotline. We do compassionate, connected, nonviolent parent education classes, regenerative conflict resolution, and things of the such. But tonight, we wanted to talk with you about digital equity and why we joined the Los Angeles Digital Equity Coalition. During the COVID pandemic, there was a viral photograph of two children sitting outside of a fast-food restaurant trying to connect to Wi-Fi just so that they can get their homework done. And the fact that these children had to do something like that was shameful. And it really highlighted the need, actually, like, a necessity of having connected, quality broadband. And so we were disconnected from our communities, just as many others were in the nonprofit world, because we weren't able to connect with them because of the lack of broadband access. And so we joined the Los Angeles Digital Equity Coalition because we saw that this was a need that needed to be addressed. And so we are going around all of San Gabriel Valley, talking to city councils, asking for your support in urging the County Board of Supervisors to address some pricing disparities that we had researched and found. We researched organizations such as Charter Communications, and we found that they were offering different pricing to different communities, especially communities that were of low income, people of color communities. They were being offered actually higher prices than higher-income communities, which then just furthers the divide in the digital equity space. And so we're asking city councils to write a supportive letter to the County Board of Supervisors, urging them to investigate these practices and to find a solution for them. In the packets that we've provided you, we've offered you fact sheets of your Assembly and Senate districts, as well as example letters of some of the other neighboring communities, like the city of Rosemead, Duarte, San Gabriel is writing one up right now. But they're all participating in urging the County Board of Supervisors to investigate these discriminatory pricing practices. And even though your community may not be one of those subject to higher and disparative pricing practices, we are a member of the larger San Gabriel and Los Angeles County family, and so we're urging you to support your neighbors and ensuring that everybody is connected to the internet, especially with small businesses transferring their commerce online. It's really important that everybody has access to those resources and those products and to support small businesses in doing so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speaker cards.
Did we receive any emails for items not on the agenda?
No emails were received, thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to our presentations. First, we have a presentation by former Mayor John Capocha with the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control on West Nyl- West Nyl virus. You going to explain to us why we all have itchy ankles right now?
Yes, we will do that. So, good evening, Mayor Garcia, and members of the City Council. Before I start, I just want to say, Mr. Parkers, that my solar installation was put on my house today, and they already sent me the bill.
Just waiting for inspection now.
Okay, again, I'm John Capocha, and I'm Sierra Madre's representative on the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control. It's been about two years since we gave you an update on what's going on with the district, so we're here to do that. But despite of the fact that it's been two years, I just want you to know that I'm very active in the organization. I'm now serving as the Vice President. I'm active on the Finance Audit Committee and the Policy and Personnel Committee. Because my focus is not just keeping people safe and, you know, vector-borne disease-free, but my focus is also to ensure that the organization is run very well and that those of you that are paying are getting the most for the money. So with that, the most important thing, again, is that, you know, we hire our chief executive. And so I'm here to introduce Jason Farnett, who was here two years ago, but he was our operations manager then. So a very significant move for the district because he's doing an outstanding job, and it's just a pleasure to work with him. And we also have his son Connor, who's helping him today. So it's good to have you, Connor, to join us. So with that, I've been on the board now for about six years, appointed by the council. And Mr. Farnett now has been serving as director for about two years. So with that, I'm just going to let him turn it over to you. And if you have any questions, either for myself or Mr. Farnett, please stop and ask, we just want to be sure that you get your questions answered. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you very much, Trustee Capocha. Appreciate the introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak with you today. Are you going, you want to run the? So I do want to thank you for, Trustee Capocha. He spends a lot of time and dedication to make sure that we have the resources we need and that the district is ran the way it should be running. So thank you very much for your time and support. So as Trustee Capocha said, he's really concerned and dedicated to making sure that both, not only the public health aspect of what we do is taken care of, but also the administration of our district is ran correctly. So I also included a couple of slides here to just give you a little update about the administration here. So the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District is a public health agency. It's an independent special district. And we conduct effective programs for surveillance, prevention, abatement, and control of mosquitoes and other vectors. And so we are comprised of 26 cities and unincorporated Los Angeles communities. And we have 27 trustees from all cities plus Los Angeles County, and they are appointed by city councils to two- to four-year terms. And currently, the cost per household is $16.90 per year, which is added to the assessment of property taxes. The administration focus and accomplishments of the last couple of years and for the next five years, the district is really trying to leverage emerging technologies, really to make our operation as efficient as we can and make those tax dollars stretch as far as we can. Two examples of that, we have a text confirmation program that communicates electronically with residents, and it's successfully now managing over 3,500 non-functional swimming pools throughout San Gabriel Valley. We also leverage Power BI and other data analysis tools. And that way, we have, we make data-driven decisions to really maximize our resources. We've also done a lot of staffing reorganization to maximize efficiency and improve morale throughout the district. We have a five-year plan to address our unfunded liability, accrued liability, with over $600,000 in interest savings just in the last two years. We also have completely updated and modernized all of our district policies and procedures. And we have an overall employee satisfaction in 2022 of 97%, which the board and myself are extremely proud of. So with that said, let's talk about mosquitoes. So much of the work that we do centers around mosquitoes. They are the world's deadliest creature, and that's correct. It's not an exaggeration. Mosquitoes cause over 1 million human deaths every year through the transmission of mosquito-borne diseases like malaria, West Nile virus, dengue, and Zika. And now here in California, the threat of mosquito-borne disease is not as high as some other places in the world, but it is something that we need to be concerned about. It impacts people every day, every year. And we do have mosquitoes here in this area that are capable of spreading disease. And it really only takes the bite of one infected mosquito to start a local outbreak. And so let's talk about the mosquitoes here locally and the mosquitoes here in Sierra Madre. There's a lot of different types of mosquitoes in California, and different mosquitoes spread different diseases. And so if you look at the mosquitoes here on the left, we have our Culex mosquitoes. And these are the most common mosquitoes in our area. And they're active at dusk and dawn, and they're capable of transmitting West Nile virus. West Nile virus is the most predominant mosquito-borne disease in California, and it is endemic in the state, which means that it's always present in our environment, and it never goes away. West Nile virus presents flu-like symptoms for one in five people infected. In less than 1% infected, they will experience severe neurological symptoms, resulting in hospitalization and sometimes even death. And we'll talk a little bit more about West Nile virus in just a minute. On the right side of the screen, we have 80s mosquitoes. Now, these mosquitoes are an invasive species. They're invasive to California. They first arrived in 2011, and they're extremely aggressive biters that are active throughout the day. And so 80s mosquitoes are now responsible for most of our biting nuisance. And so if you've noticed an increase in mosquito bites, why your knees and ankles and elbows are itchy, it's probably because of these guys. They are also capable of spreading diseases that historically here in California we haven't had to worry about. Tropical diseases like dengue fever, Zika, chikungunya. The good news is, is that none of those viruses are being spread locally now. But now that we are locally here in our local mosquito population, but now that these mosquitoes are here, we do have the risk of these diseases being transmitted locally. Local transmission will occur when an infected traveler picks up a virus somewhere where the viruses are transmitted locally. They bring it home, pass it on to our local population of mosquitoes. And so the district routinely tests these 80s mosquitoes for these diseases. And we work closely with state and county health departments to share information about infected travelers. And so this will help us quickly identify- And so this will help us quickly identify any incidence of local transmission, and we'll work to prevent widespread infection. All right, so let's talk a little bit about West Nile virus. As I mentioned, it is the most predominant mosquito-borne disease that we face. By the end of each summer, we generally detect it throughout the entire region. And so here are some statistics here for context. In 2022, California reported over three thousand mosquito samples tested positive for the virus. In our district alone, we found one hundred and sixty-five positive mosquito samples throughout the region. And in 2022, there were two hundred and twenty-one human cases reported statewide, resulting in fifteen fatalities. We recently identified West Nile virus in mosquitoes here in the city of Sierra Madre. And so there that's no reason to to change your habits when outdoors, other than just be aware that the threat exists. So we recommend wearing mosquito repellent and protective clothing when appropriate, and just really try to minimize the incidence of mosquito bites to protect yourself from any diseases that might be out there. And the the most important thing that to remember is that mosquitoes grow in water. And so in fact, if there's one thing that I'd like you to take away from this presentation today, it's this. Mosquitoes need standing water to lay their eggs and grow, and if we eliminate the standing water sources they need to survive, we can prevent them from becoming a problem in the first place. And so as you can see here on the screen, a bottle cap is enough water to attract and grow mosquitoes. And getting rid of standing water is a shared responsibility that the district counts on residents, business owners, and city leaders all to do their part. For our part, the district uses an integrated vector management program to ultimately reduce mosquito populations and prevent disease. Integrated vector management is a data-driven, multi-pronged approach that includes surveillance, public education, and control strategies. So our surveillance department is made up of scientists and field entomologists that collect mosquitoes from over eighty trap sites throughout San Gabriel Valley. They measure abundance and test these samples for the presence of disease. They also analyze critical data that they provide to our other departments to ensure the most effective use of our resources. Our communications department is made up of credentialed educators, content creators, and outreach specialists who participate in community fairs, events, and provide essential information to residents and conduct curriculum-based classroom programs for students. And then finally, our operation teams work in the field to find and eliminate standing water. They consult residents about mosquito exclusion and bite prevention around their homes and perform chemical and biological control. We also have some innovative technologies on the horizon, specifically in the field of sterile insect techniques, or SIT. And these methods, these methods use sterile male mosquitoes to crash the local population. And so SITs have been used in the United States and around the world since the nineteen fifty's to control pests. You may be familiar with the control of the Medfly. So they've been used in Southern California since the nineteen ninety's to control the Mediterranean fruit fly, and those that program is still ongoing. So these are the three major methods to produce sterile male mosquitoes in the lab: irradiation, a bacteria infection called Wolbachia, and gene editing. And all three of these methods are currently being developed and tested throughout the United States and around the world. And as these technologies become more accessible, we will be considering them tools for our toolbox. In the meantime, our message for residents is to tip, toss, and protect. We want to tip standing water from containers weekly, toss unwanted and unused containers, and protect yourself from mosquito bites by using EPA-approved insect repellent and protective clothing. We encourage all residents to take a proactive stance about not only removing standing water around their home, but also sharing what they learn and what they know with their neighbors and their community. And so there are a lot of resources on the website, not only to educate yourselves, but also ways that you can get involved with your local community to help share what you know. So we encourage all residents to go to our website at sgvmosquito.org for more information. And with that, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Manager Farnett. Do we have any questions for district manager or trustee Capocha?
Just that appreciate, I mean, I've had it. My family uses San Gabriel Vector to come out often, especially if we know there's a lot of more mosquitoes and we can't figure out where. So, do you, how is that? That can be, oh, that's the tip line, but is that also the same as asking for someone to come help?
Yeah, so if you go onto the website, there's really two things. The tip line is is to to let us know if you see standing water or you have questions about something in the community. But we also have a pretty robust consultation program where you can request a technician to come to your home, do an evaluation of your property, and provide you a mosquito management plan that you can follow throughout the year to prevent mosquitoes.
Thank you. So I had a question on kind of the the trend in the year-to-date. So, right now, I'll pick the San Gabriel Valley. We've got ninety-nine detections of West Nile virus, and there was a one sixty-five last year. So are we on track to have more cases of West Nile virus, or is it, have we peaked it, you know, does it peak early and then and then die off?
It looks like we're we're a little bit ahead of the the average. So it looks like there's a little bit more virus in the environment. As far as human infection goes, we won't have that data until, you know, months after the season. But our mosquito testing is saying that, yeah, there's a little bit more virus in the environment than this time last year over a five-year average.
Thank you. Can you tell me a little bit about your unfunded accrued liability, kind of where that is? It sounds like you're taking proactive steps to it. Appreciate the transparency on it. Tell us a little bit kind of the the risks there, the financial risks of the organization.
Yeah, so ju- just like everyone else, we were dealing with quite a bit of unfunded liability. I'm sure it's not nearly as much as a municipality. But we were at just around one point five million. It's fluctuated over the last couple of years with the market. But we are taking an active approach, specifically targeting the interest on that. So what we, so our our payment approach is to reduce as much interest as we possibly can and then carry over that interest that we're not spending into to more additional discretionary payments. And so that payment continues to grow year over year, and then our unfunded liability and our interest continues to diminish until hopefully, you know, we're we're close to to even.
And do you have a goal of trying to to reduce or eliminate that that liability?
I'm hoping to get close to a hundred percent funded in five years. But of course, as you all know, that depends a lot more on the market than anything that that we do. But the funding and the planning is there if the market cooperates.
And the funding is from from property taxes. Is that correct?
That's right. We built it into our budget, but we didn't, we haven't had to increase property taxes to address this. We've made some pretty major administrati- administrative changes to to prioritize this. And so we we didn't pass this on to taxpayers. We we've streamlined some of our processes so that we don't have to sacrifice services and prioritize this initiative.
Great. And then would your associate there like to to say anything to the council or not?
Do you have anything you'd like to add? All right.
Thank you for bringing him. I think it's great whenever we see the youth coming to our civic events to get and get involved in the community. So thank you for bringing him.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for for coming. This is very helpful.
Thank you. So as far as, sorry, you're not, you're not off the hook yet. As far as reporting dead birds, I didn't hear any of that discussion. Is that more important early in the mos- mosquito season, or is it important year-round to make sure that we're reporting dead birds? I had an experience where I was walking with the family at dusk. There was a dead bird in the parkway. Took a picture and saved it to my phone and reported it through the website. But the thing is, like, I don't know if the next morning, i- if it was at Saint Rita Church, and I didn't know if the next morning they clean it up and they're they're going to get rid of the bird, and is there a way to handle it? Do we leave it there? Like, what do we do when we come across dead birds?
Yeah, so you you definitely did the right thing. So westnilevirus.ca.com, it's a state hotline where you can report the the dead birds. And if you talk to them in person, they'll ask you a few questions. Some birds are more conducive to to West Nile virus surveillance than others. And so if it's a, if it looks like a viable sample, then they'll pass that information on to us. But year-round, if residents see dead birds, we encourage them to report it to the hotline. And then they can, they'll have instructions on the hotline. Or the hotline operators will provide you with instructions on what you should do with the bird or or if and when someone will pick it up.
Okay, thank you. So that's a, it's a completely different organization than the reporting is going to, but then ultimately, if they have a finding, it will come to you.
And they, you're more than welcome to call the district as well, but the the state handles all of the the dead bird data. And so if it goes through them, it's it's very streamlined, and we get the most out of the the information.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. All right, now I guess you're off the hook. Uh, yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's important for us to make sure we're on top of it. I've been getting it like crazy, and especially with the most recent deluge of water. There's little pockets throughout, I know I've got some buckets that collected some water. I'll make sure I'm dumping those within the week, that's for sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next, we have another presentation, a presentation by Sierra Madre Utility Utility Staff on water supply and demand assessment. Is it Superintendent McGee?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Been a while before I've been in front of you guys.
It's been a while.
Before I started the assessment and going over it, I wanted to just touch on a point that Councilmember Parkers actually stole talking to me from earlier about the rain that came through California, actually Sierra Madre over the weekend. We did receive five and a half inches of rain in Sierra Madre at the City Yards, so that was correct. And I'll, I'll just go a little bit further. Over the course of the year, we've been able to capture a lot of this water in this historic rainfall we've had. And we've actually raised our static water levels fifty-five feet, which I've been here for fifteen years, and it's never been, we've never done that in that amount of time. So that's a, that's a good talking point. And to let you guys know, I don't think I've ever seen two inches of rain in August, let alone five. I mean, we would have liked to spread that out a little bit more, but we'll take what we can get. But I just wanted to talk, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Parkers touching on that. But we're here to talk about the annual water assess- water supply and demand assessment. Just before we get started, this is an informational-based report. There's no action needed by the council at this point. A little bit of background on the assessment. It's due to the DWR, that's the Department of Water Resources, by July first of each year, and that began last year in 2022. So this is our second annual doing it. We've already turned in the report, and and it's to the DWR as we speak. Each urban water supplier must complete the tables and the purpose of evaluating water supply reliability for the next fiscal year. So when we're doing this report, we're talking about the next fiscal year, which is actually twenty-three, twenty-four, which we're in now. And we're assuming that we're in a dry year condition. For contents, we were in a third year of dry year conditions last year when we did this report, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Kind of show a little bit of a graph of what we were talking about. How do we gather information? Like I said, Stetson Engineering completed this assessment. They also completed a written assessment that was given to the council. It fully details what they went over, and it's a a much more in-depth. If we ever want to go over that, my door is always open, and we can, we can talk about that in in more depth, but we'll kind of go over it a little bit. They use the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, also the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which is inside that plan. That's our guiding document for five years for water sustainability. Actually, the next two years, we will be redoing this assess, the twenty, the urban management plan, like, I think we're really, we're going to start next year for the 2025. We also use the year report. That's the electronic annual report for the last several years. This is also data on production and and demand. The water loss audit for the last several years as well goes into this, as well as metered consumption. That's the metered consumption, that's consumption for the the residents. I mean, whatever we use, that goes through metered consumption. We also look at the availability of water. We have the rights to nine hundred and forty acre feet through the Raymond Basin, twenty-five hundred acre feet that we can spread through SGV MWD, for a total of three thousand four hundred and forty acre feet, if we need it, if we need it. I like to put this up here. This is rain totals, just to show you how rain does impact how we produce. So I showed you this one first to show you, hey, we did thirty inches of rain back in the eighteen, nineteen calendar year, fiscal year. Actually, it's a rain year. They're a little different, but they're they're almost set up with the fiscal year. And then we had three sub-twenty inch rain years. Want everybody to remember those three sub-twenty's. Actually, one's like six, six and a half inches of rain in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one. Then you can see we have our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three historic rainfall. That's not even correct. I didn't add in the five and a half inches. We're closer to fifty now. That says forty-two. We're closer to fifty now. Fantastic. We've actually, like I said, we've been able to spread a lot of that water, increase our static water levels. But I just wanted to show, based on this right here, here's production for the last four years. So you can see the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and these these three years right here, we have first twenty-three, almost twenty-four hundred acre feet of water, twenty-four, almost twenty-five hundred acre feet of water, and then back down to twenty-four hundred acre feet of water. Those are those three years we had almost no rain over the course of a of a year long. And then you can see the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we did, this last fiscal year, we only did nineteen hundred and eighty-five acre feet. We did less than two thousand. That's phenomenal. I mean, we, once again, in the time I've been here, I've not seen us below two thousand.
Superintendent McGee, if I may jump in.
Sure.
I just have a question, because we we've, we always talk about the supply, because we're always very concerned about that from the council's perspective. And it's always good when we see that supply number that we have available to us increase. And the number that we always have banging in our head regarding demand is twenty-five hundred acre feet per year. On the graph that you have up, we can, we see during the two years, we're nudging up against twenty-five hundred acre feet. And in your experience and tenure with our city, did you notice that during the pandemic years when we were home more often, and now probably a lot of us even were outside the pandemic or home more often, that the the demand for water increased during those times, or was it, was it pretty static?
I think through, and I'll speak about it a little bit, but through the AMI project, I think we're able to see not so much that, I don't think anything in the, when when everybody was home for COVID, I don't think so. I think more along the list is when we, we were also in those dry year conditions when we were there too, so.
Yeah, that's, it was like a double.
It was a double whammy, I believe, but.
Because I see the year before, we're more like twenty, under twenty-four hundred. That's only one data point.
If I went back a year before this, it was twenty-two hundred when we had that thirty inches of rain. So I, basically showing is that rain does impact us. When we're, when we're dry, we're using it. I think the public does see that AMI project. They can see when they're using water now, and they can shut it off. They even have these cool devices now that can sense precipitation now, and I've noticed a lot of those, those have been used. So, I mean, we're doing a lot, the 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 city deserves a lot of credit. The pu- the public deserves a lot of credit in this. They are the ones seeing we have a lot of rain. I don't need to use water. That's what that nineteen hundred and eighty-five.
That's striking. I think, bravo to the our residents there.
Very, very much so, but.
And I don't want to get, I know this is a certain report, and we're, you're, you're required to do this, but could you talk a little bit more about AMI for our residents, and what, how many of our residents are using it?
Sure, I'm going to skip, just because we're going to do that.
I didn't think it was in here. It was, okay.
I'm going to skip to this.
Sorry.
Right here. We have eight hundred and forty-eight current users, you see right there from the AMR portal. Plenty of room for more, but it is working. We do get people that call in. They want to see what their their productions are. They want to see what, they want to see what they're doing. And like I said, when it comes with the rain, this past year, we've had a lot of rain. We do have customers that are turning off their water and not using water in certain times. And that is why we're able to go, production is all about what the citizens are using, what we're using in the in the public, right? So if we can get down to that nineteen eighty-five, that's not because I've put any restrictions on you. We'll, we'll talk about that a little bit too. But that is because the public is taking a look at what they're doing, and they're doing their part.
We have about four thousand meters in town?
It's thirty-eight and change, thirty-eight thousand and change.
And eight hundred and forty-eight users on the AMI. That's, that's good, but yeah, obviously, we can do better.
It doesn't mean that's not some people that are doing it double, but I like to think that's one per household right there, so.
Thank you. Sorry for getting off track.
I have, I actually quite enjoy when we have feedback from you guys right off the bat. So, yeah, I want to show you the production, how it looks, based on this report, just to show you a little bit of background. Tell you what the, what the the report is. It's, we're saying, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, a dry year condition. We had three-year dry year conditions last time. Because of the rain, now we can go to a single dry year condition based on our urban water management plan. It's five tables, information on the city, anticipated demand, that word anticipated, the supply we have, shortage assessment. Do we have the supply to meet the demand that they're assessing? And then response actions. What can we do if we didn't have the water? Can we put into an element, or can we go into a phase? So we talked about a single dry year. That's what we're in this time. Because of the historic rain to- historic rainfall totals, we are able to drop down to a single dry year instead of a fourth year of dry conditions. With that being said, Stetson Engineering, and Mr. Mayor, you said it predicts a demand of twenty, twenty-two thousand five hundred and forty-four acre feet if we're in a dry year condition. We have shown that we do have the supply for it. We do have, if needed, the supply to get there. Just offset a little bit on the drought response too, letting you go, you guys remember that we, in September twenty twenty-one, we did implement permanent conservation measures. we did implement permanent conservation measures equal to or greater to level one of our water shortage contingency. Those nine common sense elements that I'll show you in a, in a second. Those are always in our municipal code now. But in June of twenty twenty-two, Governor Newsom, in his drought declared emergency, uh, had an executive order N dash seven dash twenty-two. This put all water, urban water suppliers, which is the city of Sierra Madre, into a level two of our water shortage contingency. So that is those, there's a twenty percent reduction and those nine common sense elements that we have in our municipal code. But due to the historic rainfalls, the governor was able to do another executive order, N dash five dash twenty-three this past March, and take us out of that, rescind that order. So now we're out of, we're out of any phase element except for Sierra Madre. Before it became popular to do so, in our municipal code, did ordinance fourteen forty-six, which are these nine common sense elements. And they're simple. They're put a restrictor on your hose, a nozzle on your hose, so you're not just running when you're, you're watering your lawn or you're washing your car. Don't wash hard surfaces. Don't water in the middle of the day. But these are, these are permanent in our, in our municipal code and and we did this before it was popular. So the report conclusion, Stetson says we will have sufficient supply to meet anticipated demand for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, if it's projected to be a single dry year conditions. And then any recommendation that table five had, we already have them in our ordinance. Ordinance fourteen forty-six puts them in there. So if we didn't have the water for some reason, we're putting in conservation elements that would reduce if we needed it. We're already there. Here's some conservation resources that we use. Um, going back to that A M I, couldn't put that in there. Um, we put this in there today just to to let you guys know, eight hundred and forty-eight, there's, there's always room for more. And here's our sister company, S G V M W D, some of the things they do. I'll take questions, but just to wrap it up, it is an anticipated, we did have, we said, we anticipated around twenty-five hundred acre feet of water for this past one when we did the three-year dry year condition, and we had rain and we did nineteen hundred eighty-five. So it's just anticipated. It's them taking not the worst case scenario. I like to call it the dry case scenario. And with that, I'll take any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Superintendent McGee. Do we have any questions for the superintendent?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Thank you for that presentation. Really appreciate it. Um, so do we have um uh rebates or um incentives, encouragement for some of these more advanced um irrigation systems? You know, and I've got a rachio on my house and, you know, it, it knows when it's, when it's raining. I don't have to have a, when the rain gauge is on it. It, it picks it up off of the weather stations and it stops watering. Um, you know, it lets me know certain things about the system. Do we have incentives for more people to get systems like that? Um, like rebates?
I believe through, go ahead.
Thank you for the question, uh, Councilmember Parkers. So all of our rebates are administered through the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. And yes, they do have a long list of irrigation controllers, uh, weather-based controllers that are eligible for the rebate. And if you bring that, you bring that website, uh, that, that screenshot back up, um, residents can go to the district's website and get information on rebates for washers, uh, for toilets, uh, for air, uh, weather-based controllers. Um, and there's some other items that, uh, for uh rain barrels, um, and some other items that are eligible for rebate.
Fantastic. Thank you. You, the, the, the city does a really good job of tagging folks if they've got a, a leak that's going on. Um, have we done anything similar for people that are irrigating when it's raining? I happened to be out Monday morning and uh running around town and I saw, you know, at least one yard, I think it was only one yard, that had a, a, a sprinkler going and, you know, it's, it's pouring rain out. And I'm like, you know, it, I mean, it, it, it's one thing to have the rebates on the webpage, but it's another thing to kind of, you know, that, when you get that notice on your front door, I, 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 I'll tell you, it's happened to me once and I, and I take action on it and I imagine other people would as well. Um, i- do we have anything like that? And and I ha- and could we consider something like that?
So the seventy-two hour n- notices are for continuous water use, but this being a small city and the, and the, the culture we have here, yes, we do have door notices if we happen to witness uh something like that. Sometimes it's even a knock-knock. We'll go tell somebody like that. It's a different thing. Um, we do not have the staff to be going around and making sure and seeing. It's, it's, it's mostly on a, like you said, a visual. We see it or, um.
But you can detect it with the A M I, right?
You can detect it with the A M I, but we're not consistently monitoring your A M I. Um, just to, just, it's not a, it's not a, when you see the seventy-two hour notice, that is continual water use. Your sprinklers are not continual water use.
Ah.
Your water goes off. So when you have a sprinkler go on, you use it for two hours, it goes off. I, I can't and I don't have the manpower to be going in and going through.
No, no, no.
Line by line. But I, and we would, we wouldn't want to do that anyway.
Right.
That is the, the, the purpose of the A M I is for you to do your own detective work. When I first started here, it was every two months you got to see what your bill was.
Yeah.
Now it's every day. But uh, yeah, it's, it's a great idea, but I think it becomes a little intrusive there at that point and we don't want to be that way. But seventy-two hour notice is different. It means your water's been continuously, whether it's a drip or a large amount of wa- water.
And it is significantly different. You can pick it up much easier. You can't pick up the, you know, the, whatever it is, uh, uh, the irrigation. Thank you for that. Can you tell us about the main basin and kind of where we are with that, the, the plan on that, kind of where that's going? Because I think that's an important thing, and you know, the proactive nature that the uh, the utilities department is, is taking on.
So I will speak to just information, a little bit of information, and then I will let the city manager, he might have a little bit more. But we are in the permitting phase right now still, and they are looking to the beginning of the year for contracts and the bidding process. Um, that's where we are so far. I would assume we are still going to be looking to importing water for the next least fiscal year and probably the next fiscal year after that. Um, but hopefully we'll get it going. Um, it's about it.
So, so, just, just for the people at home, so the main basin, we have rights to the main basin, which is down in Arcadia, right? It's in that, that area. And so we, we have rights to draw from that. We don't have a way to draw from it. We don't have a, a, a connection to it. And so what, what we've been doing is we've been, we've prioritized, um, and we've worked with the city of Arcadia to, to get a connection to the main basin. So if we needed the additional supply, we could be able to, to withdraw it. Is, is that essentially correct? Did I get that generally right?
Yes, so, you know, it's in a historical event and it's, it's, it's due to our city manager. Um, building a relationship with the city of Arcadia, we are going to build a joint well with the city of Arcadia that will be built in Arcadia at their city yard. And we will be able to open our, a connection line that we already have through the city of Arcadia, and we have an emergency connection right now with them through it. And we will be able to open that connection and draw water in. That way we can reduce the imported water we need to break from S G B M W D.
So, and, and that then reduces our, our demand, because some of the, the S G M W D water is, is coming from the Colorado, I imagine, because it's part of the water project, right? And so that, that decreases our, our demand on that because we're going to be able to use local aquifer water. Is that?
Yes, sir. So we'll be able to use that water and decrease what we pay for the S G B M W D water as well.
Councilmember Parkers, so the way it works now is for every acre foot that we take through our interconnection with, with the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, we have to pay back too. That's our agreement. Uh, once we're able to draw water from the main San Gabriel basin, and picture, picture a giant bowl of water under Sierra Madre. Now picture a gigantic bowl of water in the San Gabriel Valley. Um, so we don't have infrastructure in the San Gabriel Valley to draw out of that bowl. This joint well, uh, drilled in Arcadia will access water from the main basin. Sierra Madre has prescriptive rights. We don't, we, 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 um, we don't have, um, we have the right to extract water from the main basin, but any water that we take out of the main basin, we have to replenish. At a one-for-one as opposed to a two-for-one.
Okay.
So that's where the saving comes in, not just for the city, but for the district. Now the district doesn't have to replenish, um, two acre feet for every acre feet that they deliver to us. So there's savings for the city and there's savings for the water district. So it's really a win-win. Um, and it's a win-win-win because we're able to drill this well with the city of Arcadia, share the cost of, of, of designing the well, drilling the well, uh, treatment, um, and, and share the water. So it reduces the, the overall cost for both agencies to, to take on this infrastructure.
Great, thank you. And then, so, um, what is our interaction with the state water board on this? Or the regional water quality board? Um, who, who do we interact with on that? I mean, it, I assume that most of that goes through the, the water district, right?
The, our, the city of Arcadia is the lead agency on.
I'm sorry, no, no, did, not just the well, I'm thinking bigger picture. It's for us to, to interface with the state on water policy. What's the, the route on it? Who do we communicate with on, 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 on state policy?
Right, and, and I'll, I'll touch on it and I'll let Superintendent McGee, uh, uh, continue. Uh, so we do have a local, uh, state office, uh, that we interact with. Um, Stephen interacts with them on a, probably a weekly basis, but for sure on a monthly basis. And Stephen, if you can expand on, on state water resources control board and how we interact with them on water policy and, and uh, everything that you do with them on a.
We have a, we have a local representative that I'm in contact with. I'll use the word habitually. Um, but they're always giving us updates. Um, they handle everything from, um, reports that we have to do. Uh, we're in constant contact with them. Um, anything that comes online that we need to know, I have a person that contacts me personally and lets me know. It, it might not always be a good time, but we are in constant contact and letting us know where we are with water, um, where we are with reports, where we are with compliance. Um, so yeah, we do have that representative from the state water resource control board. Um, a fairly new girl, but she's doing a fantastic job and uh still have resources too. Uh, Dimitri Ginsburg, who is the, the head over there, and he's fantastic as well.
What we see is every, about every three or four years, we'll get a new district engineer. Um, and um, they do that to, um, to bring a fresh set of eyes to each, each utility to make sure that everybody's operating appropriately.
So when we had the urban water management plan before us, um, one of the concerns I expressed was that the forecast of, of water, um, supply and demand i- is based on, on a flawed assumption, a flawed history. Um, and, you know, that's what the state requires. We're, we're meeting the state law. That's what we're doing. Though, as we've seen, as I've talked about, uh, today, you, the, 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 um, past is not prologue, right? We, the, what we can, what we could have relied on in the past is not going to carry us towards the future. And I'm really curious, because there's a lot of smart people at the state water resources control board, what they're doing and thinking about those assessments going forward. Because when the twenty-twenty-five one comes around and, and if we start basing it on history, I'm going to be really concerned about seeing that. Because, you know, as we've just seen, just in the numbers you presented to us tonight, it, it isn't really representative anymore. And I want to know what the smart water folks are thinking about on this so that we can plan ahead. Because we've done a really good job of planning ahead and I just don't want to be caught, you know, um, in a bad situation in the future if we're not thinking about what the, the supply and demand is, is forecasted to be in the future. So if you could pass that along to them and, and get back to us the next time you report to us, I'd really appreciate that. Because, because I, it just, it nags at me and, and I just, it, it's something that, that keeps me up at night and making sure that we have, continue to have good water policy in the city.
Yeah, I think we will have a, you know, a pretty good, uh, voice when we're, when we have this next assessment. This would be, this will be my second one, uh, a little bit more of a, of a backbone in this, this process now. But um, I think I'll speak to us in the city of Sierra Madre. We are caring and compassionate. Some of us grew up here. We understand this place. Um, what the state's doing, I have to abide by, but what we do here is we give it extra little care. I mean, we see what we're doing. We see what the trends are and we give that little extra bit that I think you don't get in a lot of other cities.
No, absolutely. And, and I really appreciate that. We're really lucky.
Councilmember Parkers, if, if I may add, so this council and under the leadership of, of Mayor Capocha, who's, who's no longer here, back in twenty seventeen, um, we took some very aggressive steps to shore up our water system. We were, in twenty seventeen, I think we were at thirty-two percent water loss. Um, this council implemented a infrastructure charge that generated, I believe it was one million or one point two million dollars to replace aging infrastructure and leaking water pipes. Since twenty seventeen, we've been able to reduce water loss to almost single digits. I think in the next year or two, we'll probably be in, in single digits. I think the last report was ten or eleven percent.
Eleven point seven percent, yeah.
So when, when Superintendent McGee talked about how, how the amount of water reflects our residents' response to rainfall and us shutting off our sprinklers, um, that wasn't the case in twenty seventeen. Because we were losing, even if a resident shut their water off, we were losing thirty-two percent of that water. So, so, um, we, you know, the state, the state sets guidelines for the state. Um, Superintendent McGee, Director Samino and I have a pulse on what's happening with our system um, and, and providing the recommendations to, to our council. Um, and, and we've been able to, I, I think, make serious gains, um, serious strides on reducing water to, a- and find additional water resources to make sure that we have that water for, not just now, for our fu- future generations.
We'll also have several hundred linear feet of water main that we've redone in the last several years that wasn't accounted for the last time we did this. So, I mean, we're, we're doing the part that we can do to reduce, uh, the people that came before me, I mean, really paved. It's fantastic having a city manager that was also the water superintendent, also utilities director. Uh, I'm not ashamed when I'm standing up here and he does answer questions because it's, it's, it's still me in a learning, learning process. So still having my teacher right next to me, so.
Thank you. Any more questions for Superintendent McGee?
Nope. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Um, my, my only question is, and I think you might have already answered it because we, we're, we're making so much progress on leaks. What do you anticipate in, in the next year, in the next five years in terms of notching the, that percentage down? What, what kind of percentages could you, are we expecting any change or? I'm guessing it's not going to be near at the rate we've experienced in the last few years.
I will, uh, it's a little joke in the water department, but we go through every year and my, my direct, my, my foreman, my go, it's going to be less next year. It's going to be less next year. Every year we knock on wood and it's, it's, it just picks a different area, right? They're attacking as fast as they possibly can and they are, I think the mayor said it, they're doing a fantastic job. I just sit there and do reports and tell them where to go.
Right.
The guys that we have on the ground, they're amazing. There's five guys and they do the, the work of thirty. Um, but yes, I mean, I, I always imagine will go down. Right now, we're still around fifty less than we were last year.
Right.
So it's not.
So we, we are putting in mains, mains every year. So I mean, are we keeping that trend and putting the mains in each year for the next five years? What, what are we thinking? Are we talking about dropping it down a percentage or two? Or is, is the problem that too big instead be thinking in the next five years?
There's some thought process going around that we will bring to the council, but uh, it's more of a tick up than a tick down, I believe.
So Councilmember Gos, so I think, um, in twenty seventeen, we had the low hanging fruit, right? We, we, we had these areas that, um, we knew that addressing these areas was going to have an immediate impact. Um, now we're to the point where we have areas in town that are concerned, not necessarily one, one, one spot in town. It's more like we have this leaking water main here, this leaking water main here. So we're going to shift our approach a little bit, rather than going after areas the next couple of years, we're going to, or, or one, one part of town, we're going to be going after areas. Um, but taking that low hanging fruit, we anticipate that the next coming years. That's why I said, I, I think that in the next year, we'll get into the single digits. So now instead of going three, four, five percent of water loss reduction, we may be looking at one to two to three percent water loss reduction.
Yeah. That's pretty aggressive, given the size of the problem, but.
And, and, and we continue to work on this. Uh, water loss is, is, is a, we, we really want to strive to get below industry standard.
Which is about seven percent, right?
Right. Single digits, under, under ten percent, if we can get between, uh, if we can get to seven percent, it'd be amazing.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we're looking at probably about eight to ten million dollars in water main replacement to, to get us to that point.
You've got work to do.
And if, but if you recall, in twenty seventeen, we were talking forty to sixty million dollars. And it was a number that, it, it just seemed like.
It seemed impossible.
Impossible, right?
Yeah.
So I just want to hear that again. The approach previously had been, hey, let's just step in and let's replace a, a linear mile or whatever it is, um, contiguous. I know last year, we, we did some, a little bit, we did things a little bit different because there were some problem areas. Um, I think up above Camilo and that, and that area, and we, we kind of hit spots rather than one long contiguous line. Um, we're doing the downtown water main this year. Um, so am I hearing we're going to kind of go back to that, what we did last year, uh, kind of going forward? Is that the plan?
So, so what we look at is, we look at the age of the pipe, the material, how many leaks, and then the consequence of failure, right? And we rate them and we say, this is the area that needs to get replaced based on this criteria. This is how we score it. So we took care of all those areas where we had water pipe that was from the nineteen twenties. Um, and it, and we had, uh, you know, a ton of leaks on it and the crews were there all the time and the impact on the neighbors in the community. Um, some of them were transmission lines, so it could affect other areas. So we took care of most of that. Now what we're seeing is that a water main was installed here, a water main was installed here, but there's a section here that wasn't done. And we're having leaks there. And we have spots like that throughout town. And we're having leaks there, and we have spots like that throughout town. And so now, we're going to, we're, we're, we're going to do another water system master plan to identify what the next. We had a list of, I think it was thirty-two areas, so our next water system master plan is going to identify what the next approach is. But we want to target these areas so that we can alleviate those areas and those residents that are having to deal with just small sections of town that are continuously leaking, and we're spending a lot of time and resources there.
Thank you.
To answer your question, yeah, it's no longer one big section where you're doing Colony, San Gabriel Court, Santa Anita Court, it's, we're jumping now.
Okay. Do you have any more questions? Uh, just to, just to follow up on, on AMI, because fantastic points from Councilmember Parkers. Looking at a statewide policy issue, but also, when we look at our community, what can we do as residents? And for me, I feel like the AMI is, is a great tool that I've played around with, I've got two meters on my property. And I'll have you talk about it, but from what I've found is interesting, you could look historically and see what your usage has been on a daily basis, hourly basis, monthly basis, and let's say you use five acre, five units a month. You can set a little alarm on there to say, hey, if I hit seven units, let me know. And then you can go and see if maybe you have a leak on your property. Is, could you explain that a little bit, so our residents are a little?
Yes.
You'd probably do a better job, I know Jim Peterson over at the water department is fantastic at helping residents set that up.
You can do it on your phone now, that's how easy it is, there's apps on your phone, you can get that on your phone. So yes, the AMI portal, it goes, it swings both ways. You as the, as the customer are able to see your water production that you're using, your consumption that you're using. It has several different tools where you can set limits. No more do you have to call and go, like, I, I didn't know I was using this. You can actually set up how much water you want to use in a given day. And, and you can set it, and like I said, it'll, it'll give you an alert on your phone. Like I said, eight hundred and forty-eight people on it right now, everybody should want to get on this. It went from, it went from a phase of putting a, a bill every two months where you would call me and go like, how could I possibly use this? And I would have to go, well, the consumption says this and the consumption says this, that's what I've got for you. And now I can go on myself, you can call me and go, I want to go over this with you, and we can actually get on it together and go over your, while you're sitting there in front of your computer, I'm in front of mine, go over your account. Which is amazing, I can, I can there teach you how to be a water employee.
But if we set up those, those alerts, we can avoid those two thousand dollar bills for residents and.
You can be on vacation and you have one of those issues where everybody, somebody always has this, where I'm on vacation, I'm using water and I'm not even there. You, you have it, that's the greatest part of it too.
That's great.
Mayor, what's amazing, if I may add?
And we have the infrastructure, it's there for us, right, use it.
Ten years ago, let's say we, it was two, uh, two month billing period. So we would read the meter at the end of the month, two months. If you developed a leak the next day, you would go sixty days between readings. And then the time that it pro, the time that it took to read the meters and process the bills, it may be another five. So you can go sixty, sixty-five days with a leak and not know it, and that's where we had those two thousand dollar bills. Now, residents have hourly data, they can get twenty-four seven, they can log in. Water department reads the meters at the end of the month, and then in the middle of the month, they run a report to see who's, who's, has continuous usage for seventy-two hours, and they go out and hang tags. So, because of those efforts, I think those two thousand dollar bills are pretty much eliminated. And so, yes, so we encourage our residents to take advantage of that, but just the AMI program is just one tool, but it also facilitates our water department to be proactive and go out and help our residents fix those leaks. Not thirty days, not sixty days, not sixty-five days, almost immediately after we read the meters.
And to jump in, we can see too, your water consumption, and we can tell what it is, for the most part. When you look at those, we can tell three gallons, that's your, that's your toilet. We can tell when you're using this, when there's fifteen gallons going, that's your sprinklers. So we're able to, to assess that situation, take a look at it. I mean, it's, it's, sometimes it's looking like braille to other people, but to us, looking at it, we understand what it is, and the guys are able to go out there and, and assess and go, hey, your sprinklers are going on every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, how'd you know that? I can see it.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. McGee, Superintendent McGee, all these titles, I'm trying, always trying to get them right. Superintendent McGee, you, you gave a great presentation, you, you made water interesting, and it's super important, so thank you for your presentation.
Glad it was interesting, thank you.
All right, so moving on to consent. We have quite a few items, obviously, because we've been dark for, for a couple of meetings, we have free warrants and, and lots of other things. So I'll go by, I'll, I'll first ask the city clerk to read the items by title only, then we'll go item by item, see if there are any questions from the council. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as you said, there are a number of items, twelve to be exact, and so I beg the council's indulgence while I read this.
Want a sip of water first.
Consent item A is consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven approving certain demands. It is recommended that the city council approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven ratifying payment of city warrants. Consider, uh, cons, consent item B is also consideration of Resolution, this is twenty-three dash fifty-eight approving certain demands, and it is recommended that the city council approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight ratifying payments. Consent item C is consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine approving certain demands. It is recommended that the city council approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine approving payment of city warrants. Consent item D is the budget book for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. It is recommended that the city council receive and file the budget book. Consent item E is the tre, city treasurer's report for the quarter ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. It is recommended that the city council receive and file the treasurer's report. Consent item F is consideration of purchase orders in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars or more for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four. It is recommended that the city council approve the issuance of purchase orders for amounts over forty-five thousand dollars. Leads us into consent item G. This is the second reading of ordinance one four six eight, in ordinance amending chapter five point zero four, business licenses generally. Deleting chapter five point zero eight on business li, of business license fees. Chapter five point one two, business permits. Chapter five point twenty, bankruptcy, fire, and closing out sales. Chapter five point twenty-four, bingo games. Chapter five point twenty-eight, charitable solicitations. Chapter five point four zero, handbills. Chapter five point four four, taxi cabs. And chapter five point forty-eight, display of books, magazines, and other publications. And amending section five point five six point zero four zero. This is business tax certificate generally. And section five point five six point one zero zero, massage business or establishment suspension, revocation, or just restriction for cause of chapter five point five six, massage therapy, massage business or establishments of Title V business licenses and regulations of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Amending Title V business licenses and regulations of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. It is recommended that the city council conduct second reading and adopt ordinance number one four six eight. Consent item H is the consideration to initiate litigation against social media companies. It is recommended that the city council approve the contingency fee contract with France Law Group and authorize the city attorney and city manager to take any necessary steps in, to initiate litigation. Consent item I is consideration to approve SL Environmental Law Group to initiate litigation in the PFAS lawsuit. It is recommended that the city council approve the contingency fee contract with France Law Group to facilitate the initiation of litigation and authorize the city attorney and city manager to take any necessary steps to initiate litigation. Consider, consent item J is consideration to approve services agreement with Willdan Engineering for Fire Marshall, Fire Plan Review, and Fire Inspection Services. Consent item K is the enforce, the enforcement officer's annual report, and it is recommended that the city council receive and file this report. And lastly, consent item L is consideration of the amended and restated Verdugo Fire Communications Service Agreement between the cities of Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, and the city of Sierra Madre. It is recommended that the city council approve the agreement and authorize the city manager or, and, or his designee to execute the agreement. Mr. Mayor, this concludes our report.
Thank you for reading all those by title only, I do have one point before we, we move forward. I think it's I, it was a consideration, this is what was read, to engage with law, France, where, where is it? I believe you said France Law Group, and it's there, but it's, it's actually a, a different law group. It's SL Environmental Law Group, just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation is to approve the contingency fee contract with SL Environmental Law Group. The Law Office of Kevin Madonna Douglas in London, P, PC.
Great, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, and to authorize the city attorney and city manager to take any necessary steps to initiate litigation.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's open this up for questions from the city council, I'll go item by item, I know there's a lot of them here. Any questions on item, well, it's just A, B, and C, we have three warrants there, any questions, no?
On A?
On A, okay.
On A, could you just explain the one payment to CSDA Design Group for Sierra Madre noise ordinance? Is that pertinent to a particular site, is that part of our noise planning? It was for two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars?
I'm happy to do that, I believe that that was in, in Director Gonzalez is here, but I believe that was for the consultant services for our noise study.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
Sufficiency?
Yes, thank you.
Just another question on that one, so, so that one is, is particularly large, it's more than twice the others. And I can't remember, I, I went through all of them, but I don't remember what was driving the, kind of the double the size of that one. Can you tell us a little bit about?
I, 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 I would imagine it's based on deliverables, but I can have Director Gonzalez answer that.
Are you talking about the particular payment, or the warrant, uh, Group A was larger?
Yeah, warrant Group A is.
We have the finance director here.
Yeah, it, it, it is twice as large as B or C.
I think it was our liability insurance and our workers' comp insurance, if I'm not wrong.
Yes, that's right.
I think it's those two things.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members, yes, that is correct, it is our workers' comp and liability insurance that we pay at the beginning of the year.
Yeah. Wasn't there, wasn't there a payment to the, um, hers as well? Was that in that same, is that same group?
Yes, correct, we also pay our UAL required annual payment at the beginning of the year.
UAL is?
Unfunded.
Uh, unfunded actuarial liability.
Okay, liability, thank you.
Good points, thank you, Councilmember Parkers. We good with A, B, C? Okay, moving on to item D, any questions on item D from the consent calendar? Any questions on item E? F? G? Second reading, H? Or I? Nope. Item J? Item K?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, is there anything, so this is a receive and file, but these are some pretty dilapidated facilities that we've got, our houses that we've got in the city. Is there any escalation or action we should be taking on them? You know, they've, some of them have been around, I think, for, for quite a while. Uh, if, you know, one of them was vacant since twenty sixteen, the other one vacant since twenty nineteen. Twenty sixteen, we're, you know, we're getting, getting close to what, it's at, uh, seven years now. Is there anything we can do to kind of help take care of that? I mean, I, I know it was sold in foreclosure just this year, but I, I hate to have so, you, these, these buildings just, they could become larger issues for the community, so is there anything we can do about that?
Thank you for the question, and there, there are procedures, I'd like to see if, if Director Gonzalez or Coen Forst, Silva is available to answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, city council member. Regarding the annual report, it is something new that has been addressed by our city attorney. So, back in twenty eighteen, I'll give you a little bit of history, regarding twenty sixteen property, the five oh five Lotus was a squatter house. Councilmember Goss was in city council at the time when we implemented the vacant property registration. So at that time, since twenty eighteen, when the vacant property registration was in effect, I went out through every single property within the city to address all the vacant properties. Now, there is a lot of properties in the city that are vacant, but then again, we do have a lot of residents that own property in the city. Well, four of them are very elderly individuals with not a lot of income. So, I'm not here to enforce them, I just make sure that they're maintained. Overgrown vegetation, blythe, vehicles in the front yard, a lot of RVs. Specifically, RVs I don't address, because there's a lot of residents with RVs and trailers. I only go based by complaints, so if I see something, I leave it alone. But vacant properties, I do get a lot of complaints, so I do address them. I try to locate the owners of the properties. So right now, these two, when Gabe England was the city manager back two years ago, we actually went through with him, and I asked him if I can go ahead and start registering the property by order for LA County Recorder's Office. So, and then, and by doing that, once I register a property with the Los Angeles County Recorder's Office, it kind of puts a basic non-compliance lien on the property. I don't do a lot of enforcement, but it just sits there until whenever the property comes to compliance, it gets sold, then I'll get a red flag from either previous owner, or investor, or bank owner. So in regard to the two properties right now, I've never listed those properties with the franchise tax board. Same thing, it's just a separate entity, but it's state, the recorder's office is county. So, uh, the city attorney advised me, hey, do we have any very, very bad properties that you would want to register? I said, yes, I have five oh five Lotus Lane, which was a squatter house back in twenty eight seventeen, twenty eighteen. And I have seven three seven, Alta Vista Lane, that it was previously owned by a property owner, but he fled and abandoned the property. I do have talking to, I have talked to him before, he said he was on the run because of IRS or state. So he moved to Washington, and he abandoned his property. So his neighbor, who I've come in contact, is willing to buy the property, so he's been trying to maintain it. So I haven't been out there yet, but I just talked to him last week. So if he takes care of the overgrown vegetation, that'll be great, but the other issue is, regarding the bear issue, there is a shed. It's in a gully, it's down in the hillside. It goes where the bears like to sleep in that shed, so I don't go by myself, if I do, I take my pepper spray. And I had PD go out there with me more than once, to make sure that the bear's not sleeping in there or hibernating in there. But we did red tag the property, so when we got Alan Cook, a building official, all the properties that we have abandoned, most of them, not all of them, I have red tagged the property, so it gives me authority to go monitor it daily, making sure that there's no lording, no squatting, and if it is, specifically like one of the properties that I have not listed here, but it's on the notice of violation, is three fifty Lima Street, that is, that was vacant, there was a house fire, but we had a lot of squatting on that property with, I guess, the previous owner's son, we had a lot of issues, so that's where the red tag came in involved, where it actually helps me out a lot. So this is where we're at right now. But in regards to enforcement or trying to get the properties up to date, I do my best, making sure the property's clean, but by making sure if they're doing repair work, or if it can get sold or occupied, it's very hard where if there's residents that live out of the country. I have a couple of them that live out of the country, they're vacant, and I have residents that live in the city, but they have no money to repair them.
So would you recommend that if, if we do have citizens in the city that see homes that look like, you know, it, it was kept at one point, and now it seems to be more and more dilapidated, should they report it to the city through some means to planning and building in order to, so we can keep an eye on it?
Yes, they should, and most of them that they do report to me when either you go to the website portal. I document right away, go out there, take photos, and it gives me the authority to go on the property, not interior of the house, but exterior, to making sure that, hey, there's no lording, anybody squatting on there, and then I'll do my diligence by trying to locate the owner. I talk to the residents, making sure if they see anybody, I go to the police department, making sure that there's any calls for service, has, has been anybody on the property. So, um, this is how I found the owner for seven three seven Alta Vista Lane, because they got a call for a bear. PD went out there, the, the house was dilapidated, not in great condition, they tried to locate the owner, which he was in Washington, that's where I got that information, so we've been working hand in hand diligently, and I've been trying to make sure that the property stays fit. Thank you very much, thank you.
Any more questions?
They're bear squatters.
Bear squatters, yes.
Wanted to get that technically.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. And finally, do we have any questions regarding item L?
Um, I have a question for the city manager, it did seem that, of course, that's going to be a higher amount than, than before. One, because I guess there's a five. One, because I guess there's a five percent increase that we allowed each, each year, um, due to, of course, increase of costs for everything in the world. Um, but can you explain a little bit why it would be so much more in this, in this last, since two thousand twenty, I would guess?
So, one of the things you'll, you'll, um, you'll hear from our fire department is that we have, um, a lot more calls for service, especially since we have unified response. Um, and the, the ninety-four thousand dollars is based on, uh, this year's calls, um, and so next year will get reevaluated based on, on, um, on this year's calls for next year. So, um, the, the number is based on the calls for service for the previous year, um, and that item was budgeted for and, and approved in the budget.
So, when, when we go, say, to Arcadia, we pay for the services of the dispatch, but at the same time, do we collect the money from, from, say, the, the ambulance and the medical costs, and that goes into our general fund? Do we collect that, or does the city have the call?
Uh, a- a- and our, our fire chief is, is not here today, but I'll do my best to answer. So, if, if, um, if somebody with the city of Arcadia has a paramedic, uh, is enrolled in their paramedic program, um, then we do not collect. Um, and likewise, if, uh, Arcadia transports one of our residents that's enrolled in our paramedic program, they don't collect. But if we transport somebody, we do bill the insurance, um, and, and we, we do collect. So, there is cost recovery, um, in, in, in those calls, in, in the additional calls that were, that, uh, you know, we do every year, um, and so that helps pay for some of this.
That's amazing, 'cause that, that's a big revenue building for our services, and it also shows that our fire department with this, that we are accepted in the automatic aid now, that we're able to, to keep this going, and it's, and it means that we're competitive. That means that our firefighters and our, our medics are competitive enough to go into their cities, and they come into ours, and we're working the same, so thank you.
Any more questions on item L? Okay, let's take it to public comment. Do we have any public comment for the consent calendar?
Mr. B-, uh, Mr. Mayor, no one submitted public comment cards for consent items, and we did not receive any emails in the city clerk's office either.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for any, any comments before we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Uh, item G, uh, I just want to thank the, uh, Planning and Community Preservation Department for such a thorough update. We haven't updated it since, I think, nineteen ninety-two. Um, it was some extensive changes. Appreciate, uh, the city clerk for reading all of that. That was quite a long item. Um, and I think it's, it really shows that we're trying to, um, improve all of our code and, and ordinances, uh, throughout the time, so I just, you know, kudos to, to all the hard work going through that. That, 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 that was, was a thankless task. It was very important. It's really helped us, and especially dealing with some, some issues we've got in town, particularly around massage parlors, so thanks.
Any other comments on consent calendar? Finance Department, great job. The budget book, as usual, looks beautiful. It's great, comprehensive, easy to read. Uh, great job. Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that we approve the consent calendar and all of its, how many items is that?
Twelve.
Twelve items.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye carries unanimously. Thank you for your patience with that. Okay, moving on to the public hearing, um, before, before we get started here, I have a question from Madam City Clerk, 'cause I do see some residents in attendance that I think want to speak on item one, but I have a feeling we're going to continue this to a date certain. Is it okay to open the public hearing, to hear some public testimony, and then still continue it to a date certain, since, since so, I think some residents are here to speak? We can hear their testimony?
Yes, so the, this is a continued public hearing. It, it ha- was previously noted and con- noticed in the newspaper and continued by the city council. The, i- if the, uh, council so chooses, you may receive testimony at this evening, and then, again, if you so choose, you may continue the public hearing to a date certain or uncertain, depending on the pleasure of the council.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, so I, for me, I think we should continue the public hearing, hear public testimony, 'cause the more, the better. It is a public hearing, and then we can entertain a continuance, uh, to date certain after we hear public testimony. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay, let's reopen the public hearing. Um, any, any questions for council, from council? I know we asked a lot of questions last time around.
Be good. Councilmember Parkers?
Yes, so, so I, I just had a, a, a couple. So, um, the Natural Resources Commission, they, they just saw this, uh, this month. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, so then, then we'll get an update of it, we'll get an update of the ordinance at the next meeting, or what's the, the process on it? Do we have to hear it first before we see the update? It sounds like that they were, I'm trying to understand with respect to the noise and, um, leaf blowers. It almost sounded like they, they might want to pull it out, and so I'm, I'm trying to, to wrap my head around what the recommendation is there, 'cause it's not clear to me.
So, the recommendation from the Planning Commission, I believe, was for the Natural Resources Commission, uh, to evaluate the, the leaf blowers, and that is at the, at the Natural Resources Commission now. Um, Management Analyst Carlson is here, and he can talk about a timeline on when that item will potentially come to council.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager Reyno Sola, Mayor. Um, at last week's Natural Resources Commission, this was agendized. Um, they had also been kind of following the, the progress of, of the noise ordinance. Um, we are taking an approach not necessarily for noise, but for environmental considerations, emissions, and public health. Um, we will be prepared, whether it wants to be separated, bifurcated from the noise ordinance, or if it's going to be wrapped into it in one way or another. They asked, uh, staff to present a draft ordinance at their September meeting that will be relatively close to those ordinances that we see in the city of Pasadena and the city of South Pasadena. I don't know that they'll be ready to approve the draft ordinance in September. They might take another month to go through it, but that's just the status of where they are right now.
So, how, so the staff ordinance, we've got an ordinance before us now. How would the ordinance that's being presented to the Natural Resources Commission relate to what is in front of us tonight?
I think that's to be determined. I mean, the, the noise portion, um, as recommended, or the noise portion of, of leaf blowers, we're actually calling them gas-powered landscape equipment at the Natural Resources Commission. That section of the ordinance may be taken out of your noise ordinance and reintroduced a- at a different place. Perhaps, uh, based on the city attorney's, um, recommendations, it can be left in the noise ordinance thing, but that doesn't seem too intuitive to me. I don't have the answer at this time. I think a lot of that's going to be shaken out going forward.
So, if we play this out, I, I, I know the plan is, is to continue this to a date certain. Um, I think it's a date certain, but to continue this. Um, and let's say we, we take it for the September twelfth meeting, which is, I believe, before the next Natural Resources Commission, and we approve the ordinance. And then the Natural Resources Committee at their September and October meeting say, oh, we want to do a environmental ordinance around gas-powered lawn equipment. What happens next? 'Cause we've, we've got something that's on the books, and we've got it to, so how do we, how do we reconcile them? Can we try to do that in advance, or what, what's the thought there?
Well, I, I think ultimately, if it's the council's wish, you can leave the noise consideration, the decibel levels that you've been talking about in this section of the ordinance. And under another section, off the top of my head, it might be the public safety section, we would add, uh, ordinance talking about the restrict, the possible restrictions or prohibitions due to emissions and public health of the electric, of, of the gas-powered landscape equipment. I would really like to talk to our city attorney to, to ask for his recommendation. We want to make it as clear as we can. We've been working so hard to clean up our, our ordinances. Let's, you know, be as intuitive as possible, and so people can find what they're looking for, too.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Management Analyst Carlson. So, I, kind of based on what the, the question answered I just heard, um, as I, I know Pasadena has banned, um, gas leaf blowers, was, was that, it sounded like it's not a noise ordinance issue. It was a, um, pollution issue. Is that, is that correct?
I, I think similar to what we're doing, it may have, uh, been born as a noise issue, and it evolved into, uh, air quality. It evolved into, you know, climate considerations and those type of things.
Okay, so I, I'm trying to play this through in my mind. So, we had, uh, South Pasadena council member and AQMD, uh, board member Caciotti with an electric leaf blower in here, and, um, didn't have to do with ordinance, right? It was something completely different. And that thing was so quiet. But I have a DeWalt electric leaf blower, and it's louder than the gas leaf blowers anywhere. So, I don't recall seeing decibel levels regarding electric versus gas. It was just banning gas within our, within our proposed code, right? Am I correct there? Was, or was there, duh, you could, did the electric ones have decibel level issues as well, uh, taps as well?
Perhaps, uh, Director Gonzalez can help me, or can remind me what the Planning Commission was discussing, 'cause I do know that there was a question, when you have an electric leaf blower that actually has a higher decibel level than a gas one, how do you shake that out?
Yeah, I think that's a big question, because to me, uh, as I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm thinking, and I know this might be more comment than question, but is this, uh, environmental issue wrapped up in a noise ordinance? Um, I want to make sure we figure this out and do it correctly.
So, the noise ordinance, actually the section referencing leaf blowers was actually amended as a proposal for the noise ordinance, and it's just referred to as garden equipment. And it is not, I, it's, it's only restricting time of use, and it is not addressing any decibel levels. This is one of the sections that was a question from the Planning Commission to the city council to address in your deliberations.
All right.
So, so in South Pass and Pasadena, it is, it, it is in an environmental section of the municipal, the city municipal code?
I don't think we know for sure.
Okay. I, I, can we get that as a part of the next staff report when it comes back, just so we're clear on what we're voting on? 'Cause I think it, it, I, I don't want to create any confusion in it, and I, and I, I think we're going, we've got a couple of different thoughts here, a couple of different threads we need to track down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions before we open this up to public comment? Councilmember Goss, I see one banging around.
Confused. I mean, I, the complaints that I get from our, our, our residents are typically about noise, and, but occasionally also the dust that is, that's engendered by the whole thing. Um, they, they typically complain about gas-powered blowers, but it would seem to me that we can't address noise if there are electric blowers that are noisy, too. We should be addressing all noise sources from blower, blowers, right? Um, I don't know how that relates to time of, time of day use. I thought we were just talking about putting some kind of limit on what could be used based on the noise they make. But this is also a time of day use issue as well?
Yeah, that's how the ordinance reads, I, I believe.
Well, I mean, we, we can leave it the way it is, and just adjust for the decibel level, right?
Councilmember Goss, I believe that the, the time has to do with, let's say, on a Saturday, when you have a gardener that shows up at seven o'clock in the morning.
Right, right.
But if it's just.
It's a separate issue, but I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine dealing with that one, too. But it's a separate issue. You could have a gardener show up at
I want to make sure we're not getting into.
Not make any noise, right?
We're not getting into deliberation here, 'cause I, I almost did, so.
Yeah, okay.
I know, my, me too.
Maybe we should discuss that back.
I'm trying to narrow down what we're actually discussing here, what, what, what we're going to hear testimony on.
Well, it sounds like it's two things. I think, I think.
Two things, right?
I think that's what we need to get clarity on, is to, to try to avoid the discussion. It's, it is both the noise and the environmental, and kind of the impacts of both. I think we need to get some clarity on that before we have further deliberation.
So, for the Planning Commission, when I was at the Planning Commission night, that evening, um, it was that they didn't feel, they didn't feel that they should have the oversight of the emissions issue, the environmental impact. They wanted to send the environmental impact, not necessarily the noise issue part, the environmental impact to the correct commission. So, when they were addressing it, they didn't necessarily comment on the noise part of it. They were saying that they wanted to give it to the other commission for that reason.
So, I'm going to try to craft this as a question. Um, so, co- commencing June twenty twenty-four, is unlawful for any person to operate or authorize the operation of gas-powered leaf blower anytime for any purpose. This is a noise ordinance. Did we see, or have we heard testimony that a gas-powered leaf blower is always louder than something that is not gas-powered?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. That's, thank you. I think that was a question, right? Okay. Okay, any other questions before we open this up to public comment?
Let's open it up.
Let's open it up to public comment. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk's office received three emails from the public that were forwarded to the city council and uploaded onto the city's website. At this time, we have not received any speaker cards on this public hearing.
Okay, okay. 'Cause I did see some residents that sent an email, and I assumed that they might want to talk, but, um, let's, let's, well.
So, so bef- before, I only see two that were sent. Did the other members of the, uh, of the city council get three public comments? And did I, did mine get buried in my email?
I got two.
That's what I recall, too.
I received one from, from a, and then I received two, but one was a repeat of the first one. Uh, maybe after four o'clock, we received them after that. I don't know.
Oh, it, I believe it may have been. The third email, although it was uploaded onto the city's website, the third email was from the Stevenses.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so now, let's bring this back to, to council regarding a motion, uh, whether, just for full disclosure, this issue was brought before the council, um, by Mayor Protem Krebs, and she could not be here tonight. Um, so we, we thought it'd be best to then continue this to a time when she is, she is here to help with the deliberation. So, if we have a motion to continue this to date certain, I, I think our next meeting, uh, where she will be available is September twelfth.
So, before, I'm happy to make that motion, but before I do, will we be able to get clarity on the environment versus noise for that? 'Cause if, if, if we don't ha- if there isn't time to get that, then maybe we continue to the next one. I, I'd like to, to take care of it sooner rather than later, but I just want to take care of it.
I think that's a good point, but I want to make sure we're doing proper noticing for, uh, for a public hearing. Um, so I think, Madam City Clerk, if you can give us some guidance on that.
Absolutely. We have two options, uh, available to the council for consideration. Option number one is to continue it to a date certain, in which the city council would specify the exact date when it would come back. The option number two is to, uh, continue it to a date uncertain, at which time we would evaluate all the information, and then the council or city staff, depending on when the information is available, could bring it back and then renotice it in the newspaper ten days prior to the public hearing date.
So, I, we've been without this ordinance for a hundred years now, right? Whatever, for a long time. Uh, do we see a rush? Um, I think to Councilmember Parker's point, do we see a rush to get this through, or, or do we want to continue to a date uncertain, and then make sure we get, try to make sure we get this right when it comes to us ultimately?
I would prefer, I, I, so I'll, I'll make the motion, and
Yes.
I can, I can be persuaded other ways, but I, I move to continue, what's the, the number of this one? I continue the current agenda item to a date uncertain.
We have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further questions or comments before we go to a vote?
Just so that I'm understanding, the council is going to vote on whether to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain.
That's correct. That's the motion.
Correct. That is my motion.
Any other questions about that before?
Still hear public comment.
Well, we, we did. We did, yeah.
We open to public comment, and we'll open it again when it comes up.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, for sure. Any questions? Other questions before the vote?
Just a quick comment. I mean, I, I'd like to get it done sooner rather than later, but I think this is prudent, because we have several different things working at the same time here that have to be coordinated, so I, I just want the public to know that we're all committed to making a good ordinance here, and if it takes a little extra time, then so be it, right?
Yeah, and I agree. If, if we can get, if we can get a look at both Pasadena and South Pasadena's ordinances, uh, if they're, uh, read through those and have an understanding of how, how and why they did what. Uh, read through those and have an understanding of how, how and why they did what they did. Might be a good, good idea.
I appreciate your, your input too of, of knowing that perhaps it's not the fact that it's the gas powered equipment that's noisy. That it's a little separate, so, good, thank you.
Anything else? Take it to a vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Gary's unanimously, we have continued this item to a date uncertain. Thank you. Okay, public hearing number two. Consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash five six, a resolution of the city council, the city of Sierra Madre designating Lizzie's Trail Inn. As historic landmark to be included in the Sierra Madre Register of Designated Historical Landmarks for the property located at one sixty-five East Miramonte Avenue. And do we have a presentation on that? Director Gonzalez, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, members of council. Tonight you will be considering a historic designation of Lizzie's Trail Inn. The property is located at the northeast corner of Mount Wilson Trail and East Miramonte Avenue. The site contains two structures and they, they are located within the land use and zoning designation as Civic and City Park. Both buildings are owned by the city and are used as museums by the Sierra Madre Historical Society. The Richardson House was constructed in eighteen seventy-nine. And is considered to be the oldest residential building in Sierra Madre, predating the city's incorporation. Lizzie's Trail Inn was constructed circa eighteen ninety to nineteen hundred. And was operated as a trail stand as, and refreshment store. Lizzie's Trail Inn was originally, um, located east or west of Mount Wilson Trail. And relocated to its present location, uh, for, to accommodate the construction of a water tank. So the Richardson House, which is depicted in this slide, was previously designated as an historic landmark by the Historic Preservation Commission. However, no historic preservation report was prepared for this building or Lizzie's Trail Inn as well. And staff wanted to take the opportunity at this time to have an historic resources evaluation report prepared. So we can have more, uh, information for both structures. And just as, as a point of note, the city does not have to comply with the regulations contained. In chapter seventeen or title seventeen of our zoning code, uh, as indicated in the slide. Um, however, staff found that we, we believe we should be, uh, applying the same rules to the city, um, that we apply to our residents. And therefore, we are, uh, made a recommendation, uh, to move this forward through the planning commission, which has made the recommendation to the city council. Provided are a couple of photographs of Lizzie's Trail Inn and I just wanted to point out that the historic resources evaluation report determined. That the builders, uh, or the builder of the structure is unknown. And the architecture is a vernacular example of the style of building of a commercial enterprise at the time of construction. And the report indicated that under criterion B architectural, there is no architectural significance. Uh, Lizzie's Trail Inn, however, does qualify for designation as an historical cultural landmark, because it's closely associated. With the early settlement and residential development of the city. Uh, shown on the top left corner is Elizabeth Luisa Alder Weisstoppel McElwin, or Lizzie. She actually immigrated from Ukraine to the United States. She was born in eighteen eighty-eight and also eventually purchased the property in nineteen twenty-five from William Kaylee. So Stoppel sold the property relatives due to poor health, ten years later in nineteen thirty-five. To Robert and Thelma Orme, who took over the trail stop and continued operations until nineteen forty-eight. Depicted at the lower left corner of this slide is, uh, Elise Orme, a relative of Robert and Thelma Orme. And she's preparing, uh, ravioli, um, in the building, Lizzie's Trail Inn. And the image on the, uh, far lower right corner is, uh, the federal gemen raiding Lizzie's moonshine still in nineteen twenty-four. During the era of the prohibition. So under criterion A historic or cultural significance. The historic resource report prepared by Sappho's Environmental, our consulting, uh, historic consultants. Identified Lizzie's Trail Inn as a, as significant under criterion A historic. As a cultural landmark, because the site is closely associated with the early settlement, residential development. And early recreational trail expedition on the Mount Wilson Trail. So before the city council this evening, you can adopt the Resolution twenty-three fifty-six. Designating Lizzie's Trail Inn as an historic cultural landmark. You can approve the, uh, resolution with modifications or ask staff for further information. And we can, uh, come back at a later time. Staff is, uh, recommending that the city council consider alternative number one to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-six. Designating Lizzie's Trail Inn as an historic cultural landmark to be included in the Sierra Madre Register. Of designated historic landmarks, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Do we have any questions for the director? Councilmember Lowe, please.
I have a question, since it's a cultural designation. Then it won't have some of the more restrictive. Rules about what can be done to the building?
That's correct. If it was an architectural, had architectural significance, we would go back to the planning commission with alterations. Uh, for approval of a certificate of appropriateness. Being a cultural designation, you could actually demolish a building under that designation. Have a plaque, uh, placed at the site and the report placed in the library archives.
But it just makes it also, like I said, it makes it a little easier to make adjustments, it doesn't have to go to planning commission. So, and then number two was, um, has the Sierra Madre Historical Society been a part of this? And of course, I'm assuming they approve. Or have they, have you, did you find out more information from them?
Um, Chris Semino and myself met with, uh, members of the historical society onsite at Lizzie's Trail Inn, sitting outside on the porch on a hot day.
Thank you.
So, I, I think it's important, I think I'm, I'm really glad this is before us. Um, I think creating it as a historic designation is important. But I'd like to probe a little bit further into what councilmember Lowe said. So, so creating it as a historic designation allows us more flexibility in renovations with the building, with, with respect to the city code, is that right?
It, it wouldn't allow more flexibility, remember, this, this is not a, an architecturally significant building, but if it were. Then it doesn't allow more flexibility, it would require a little bit more oversight. But in terms of flexibility, in terms of, terms of utilizing the historical building code. Um, it would provide flexibility without having to bring it up entirely, uh, to current code.
And, and if we didn't make it a historic building, would we still have the flexibility of not bringing it up to building code? Or would we have to bring it up to building code if we went in and, and it-
At that point, since there is no designation, then we would probably utilize the current building code.
Alright, so, so, so this actually, um, allows us to, um, consider the uniqueness of the building and not have to. To, to be, to, and I'm trying to think of the right way to phrase this. So we don't have to bring it up to code in it, um, but we can do it, do what we feel is best in our discretion.
Correct, that's a good way.
So, does that create a liability then? Cause the building code is, is largely like trying to make sure that like, uh, life and safety isn't hurt and things like that. I mean, this isn't an occupied building, so it makes some sense not to do that. But, um, is, it, does it create a liability for the city from the other side?
We would still have to comply, um, should, we don't have to comply with ADA access requirements, but in this case, it would be very difficult.
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly the use of the, the structure as a museum. I'm assuming people are allowed to walk through and, and view, uh, the setting as it was. Uh, possibly when Lizzie was operate, operating the facility, um, so it has limited access. Again, the, utilizing the historical building code would allow us not to have to comply with all requirements. But again, we have to take precautions as to safety.
Okay. And, and do we know why that this one wasn't designated historic when Richardson was? It just, it, it, I find that kind of confusing to me, I didn't know if you found anything in the administrative record of-
Yeah, we, we did not.
Okay. Another head scratcher. So, what? I wish the city attorney was here, but I'm, so I'm gonna ask this question anyway, stop me if we, if we, if we can't answer it, but. So what is the, the schedule and the plan for repairs for both Richardson and Lizzie's? You know, we've got, and, and I think we talked about it at a previous meeting, we've got that back room for the still that we want to make sure we designate money to, to, to repair. And so that we can, you know, create the functioning kitchen there and moves, and create more spaces for, um, exhibits. We've got the, the tree at Lizzie's that we definitely need to take care of and we've got to balance that out. Do we have kind of a timeframe on it? This is kind of been here for a while and I just, I, I, I worry, you know. We get another one of these big windstorms and the, um, a tree branch goes down and, and damages Lizzie. Or it, it takes out the, the, the back kitchen, uh, of the Richardson House. So to me, this is unlike the noise ordinance, this one to me is a little bit more urgent to try to get it, um, you get it taken care of. I know we're doing it with the, the environmental report, so I think, it sounds like it's the first step, but can you walk me through some more of the timing on it to help, help me?
So this, since this is a city owned facility, it's really under the, um, operations of the public works department. Under Chris Semino, so he's been working and identifying the scope of work and, uh, financing for that.
He ducked out before we could ask him, okay. So, so in other words, you don't have the answer to that, it has to be-
I do not.
Does the city manager have any idea?
Councilmember Parker, so, so you are correct, this was the first necessary step, um, to move forward with the renovations of. Of the, the museum and, and, um, and Lizzie's Trail Inn. Um, I do not have a timeline, um, but it's something definitely that we can report back, but we needed to get this process done. We needed to get the historical evaluation complete, um, so that we can, uh, know for certain what we can do to each of the buildings.
Makes sense, alright, sorry, no further questions.
No, it's great, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Okay, uh, now at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to, uh, public comment. Uh, typical rules, uh, you'll have three minutes, please fill out a yellow card, uh, state your name and, um, residence. And, uh, keep it to the topic. Madam City Clerk, do we have any, any comment cards?
Do they have to be?
We might be getting them right now.
Uh, Mister Mayor, the city clerk's office did not receive any emails on this public hearing item and it looks like we do have a speaker card forthcoming.
Maybe two.
Maybe two.
Um, good evening, my name is Leslie Ziff and I'm the president of the historical society here in Sierra Madre. And I am at Lizzie's every Saturday, um, basically, uh, for the museum purposes. So my question, I think, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, the dates are wrong, so we need to, I think we need to fix those dates before this whole thing goes through. On the date of when these places were built and when they were moved and all that. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is, this designation is for the city, right? Not the landmark home list. Is that correct? Cause it's already on the landmark home list. So.
Uh, but- The Richardson House is on the-
Well, so is Lizzie's.
Oh, there it is, yes. And I don't have this on my list.
Well, okay, this is as of twenty fourteen. So it already is on this list, so my question is, is this list different from what the city is trying to designate?
It would not be, it would be the same designation. Um, what we didn't have though, with altering or, uh, fixing up any of the buildings to look at in historic evaluation. We didn't have an historic resources evaluation report, so that's what this is.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I, I mean, this is, yeah. This is really public comment for, but, uh, since you were, I mean, you have a vested interest, you're the president of the historical society.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, 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 I'll allow a little Q and A.
So are you in favor of this, Leslie?
Um, yes, um, I think it's important that it gets designated through the city to, to be able to do the work that needs to be done. What I don't agree with is that it's under a designation that it could be torn down at any time. So I know you guys wouldn't do that, but ten or twenty years from now, what kind of city council will we have that might say eh? I mean, they tore down the Carter Estate, um, in the seventies, so, you know. How, what kind of protection do we have for the city to not tear down those two buildings? Because they're two of, you know, Lizzie's is probably, or the Richardson House are probably the third oldest buildings in the whole city. Other than the Lacumberg Cabin and whatever's left of the Carter Estate. Yeah, so, um, we need to start prize, you know, Monrovia prizes their buildings and keeps them and. And we need to, our designated city buildings that are historic, we need to take more pride in that and make sure that they don't get tearing, torn down. So I guess that's my, what I'm putting back to you guys.
I'm glad you did, thank you.
No, yeah.
No, that's a concern.
Diane, did you have anything else?
This is, um, the vice president of the historical society?
You guys know me, Diane Sands, um, vice president of the association and curator of the museums. As councilmember Parker knows, there's not a time that goes by that I don't see him, that, that it's not eagle eyed at him, you know, like what's the update? Of course, we feel the museums are really, really important. And they're a slice of what is gone already, based on the things we have, the ephemera we have. You know, the life that was when that, when Lizzie's itself was a, a institution for people going up the trail and going up to the camps. And getting resources for their camping and then a, a wild time in the twenties and even into the thirties. And as Leslie says, some of the dates are a little off on that, um, so we'll be glad to correct those for you. But as with Leslie, it, it does worry me a little bit, I'm extremely grateful that we want to not restore them. We realize they're not architecturally significant, that, you know, a famous architect did not design these things. We have no idea at any time, shape or way, who built these buildings, you know, what, who was involved with this. But they're significant to this town. They're significant in the fact that as Leslie said, there are some of the oldest buildings here. And we need them protected and it does worry me too, that it's taken us twenty-two years to get to this point. Cause Leslie's been keeping track, she knows exactly how many years she's been working on trying to get things fixed. And twenty-two years from now, we'll all be gone. And will the new generation come in and say, oh god, nobody wants museums anymore, everything's digital, tear them down, let's put in something nice up there. So that is a concern for us too. Um, we have a lot of dedicated people who really care about those museums. And every Saturday, you'll find Leslie and I up there, telling them the history of the town, telling them things they've had, they have no idea- telling them things they've had, they have no idea. They never suspected. They never knew. And talking about other entities in town, Ward's Ranch, half the people haven't heard of Ward's Ranch. So, it's just, it's a dissemination and we want to be sure it's taken care of. We, we don't need the back room of Richardson, you know, a Taj Mahal. We need it so we can set our kitchen up in there as, as councilmember Parker said. And we have a non-working still, you know, we do say non-working because that was part of the era and part of what we experienced there. So, we want to give everybody the full immersion when they can. So, yeah. But we're appreciative of where we've gotten to this point, but we really kind of want to make sure that the next generation doesn't come in and just plow them all down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sands. Do we have any more public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Like to close the public hearing, public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion. Anybody want to dive in?
Is there any presidents with, presidents with the, I don't think in our city, but in nearby cities? And again, like sometimes it's that fine line between what is historical and what can we make sure we preserve and what things should not be preserved and things like this should be preserved. I think it's part of our history in Sierra Madre, especially because it is still utilized and it's still active versus something like, like the hospital over in Pasadena that's become a tagging zone. Like, you know, how do we protect something, but how do we make sure it doesn't fall to the wayside and, and be abused? And is there any, is there any legality or can we make that happen?
So, the follow-up to that, is there any, there's no provision in this resolution to make that happen? So, we could approach it to, we could pass this if we're in agreement and at least we've done this much. And then maybe we come back and revisit the second part and try to put in some kind of historic protection to these buildings.
Yeah, and so you're mentioning the hospital on Washington. My understanding that's privately owned, right? Carter, the Carter Barn and McCumber Cabin were both privately owned and sold. These two buildings are owned by the city. So, there's a little bit difference there. So, I'm comfortable now getting this done. And if we need to bite into whether or not the city should be doing considerations for, for preservation of these. I mean, that, you know, a lot of times there, there needs to be an endowment set up or something to keep these, keep these buildings continuing or, or some type of budget item to, to continue these buildings. So, I think it's a whole other process, but this is a good fir- first step into the preservation because if we can make these museums nice, and they are nice currently, but they could be, they could be better, right? And open up more of the museums, more people would frequent them and talk about them and there, it, there's more likelihood that we would want to keep them around as, as a city when we're all dead and buried, right? So, I think this is an important first step to getting these improved upon and we can kind of see where, where we take it from there.
As long as it doesn't take twenty more years?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I think, I, I just want to say with the leadership that we have with the, with the Historical Society, they basically took us by the hand at an event in Kirsten Court and said, come up and see what's going on. And we, the whole council went up there and we saw what was going on.
By the hand? I got taken by the car.
And it's been within two years that we've, I, I feel like we fast-tracked this. We did, we did in two years what wasn't done in twenty years. So, I think we should be proud of that.
So, I'll echo what, what my fellow council member said. You've, you've read my mind on a lot of things, although I, I really appreciate your comments about, you know, thinking about this on, on an endowment or funding because I think that's really important. I think you, you heard a little bit of my questions. I, I'd like to kind of get a, a strategic plan or, or plan around it, you know, at least, at least a short-term plan and maybe a long-term plan. The short-term plan is, you know, how do we take care of the urgent items that are liable to, to, to come down now and we lose a piece of history, which I would, I would really hate and I know that they would never forgive me on. And so, I, I really want to do that. But then, to your point, you know, start thinking about, okay, we need to be thinking about how we prevent this from, from, or that we maintain this going into the future and how do we fund that maintenance? I really, I think both of those are, are important going forward. So, you know, I think it's easy, we've got an easy step before us tonight, you know, that, that, the, the preservation of this and whatever the resolution or our ordinance is on this, that resolution twenty-three fifty-six, I'm willing to make a motion right now to, to designate this as a historic landmark. And, and I'll stop there with the, with the motion. But I'd like it as a part of the record that we need the, 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 the planning for it in the future.
Yeah, and before there's the second to that motion, while we're still riffing on that, and this is kind of ancillary, but I think it's important. And I, I try to kind of pepper this in whenever I get the opportunity. We have nice things in this town because of the people in the town. My concern, I'll be fifty in three months, right? And so, I, my concern is we need to continue to foster people like Diane Sands and Leslie Ziff and Alcorns, the people that take the time to reengage within the community and give back and continue this volunteerism. Because if, if we don't keep fostering the museum, like you said, twenty years from now, if we don't have the same type of residents that we have now, if we don't continue that cycle, maybe nobody has a taste for those buildings anymore. And it's sad. So, I just want to say, I'm trying to still couch it within this issue. Part of the bigger picture is continuing as leaders and to foster future leaders that understand how important the city is and the things that we have.
And I'll echo that. You know, when I joined the council, we were having commissions that we had a hard time filling. And you had a very tough decision at one of the previous meetings, at two meetings ago, of we had too many folks. I think, you know, we need to continue to communicate the opportunities in this town. And, you know, maybe it's not a commission. Maybe it is the, you know, the, the Historic Preservation Committee. I, I don't know the right term, so I apologize that I'm getting it wrong. But, but we steer them towards the many opportunities in this town and really continue that. Because I think we've started to build that and I'd like to continue to, to build on that and, and to, to expand on it because I think you're right, is that we've, we've got to, we've got to draw in those under fifty, like yourself, that, to, to, to get, to get more involved in the city and engage in, in so much that the city has to offer. It's just incredible. So, thank you for saying that.
If we could get a liquor license. Fire up that still.
No, no, he's not.
I am not joking. You're going to have support in perpetuity.
I'll be there.
Lizzie Sour Mash. I would love it. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second to the motion.
Did you get the motion, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, is the motion to, of, by councilmember Parker to approve or, and adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-six as it presented?
It is.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a second. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
All right.
Where are we? We're at the end. So, do we have any ideas for future agenda items?
I do, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see if we can schedule the representative from the Foothill Workforce Development Board, Diane Russell, to make a presentation of the council.
Let's do that, yes.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to agendize a, a presentation on the, the wildlife, an, an update on, on the wildlife situation in the city. And, and I, I say wildlife intentionally. So, I, I'd love to have Analyst Carlson give an update on the, our wildlife management plan. I'd love to have Chief Berentos, I think I've got this right, on, on the incidents we've had and some more description of it. You gave a, you know, a very shocking number there. And I'd like to have the Law Enforcement Division, if we can get them here for Fish and Wildlife attend, as well as the, and I don't know, the analyst or the?
McKenzie.
Yeah, McKenzie Rich as well. I think that could give us a really full picture of it because there, what I've, and I'm trying to avoid discussion on this, but there are different roles for RPD and the Law Enforcement Division, and I just learned that today. And I think it'd be helpful for my fellow council members as well as the community on, on what they're doing. And there's, there's, there's a lot in this issue here and, and, and that starts in the local item. And so, I, I think we, we start there.
So, you're looking for a presentation from those groups?
Those, those four groups, yes.
Yeah.
I also wanted to address the presentation or the public comment on non-agenda items coming from the Healing and Justice Center. As an educator, we have found that we have a huge increase in the homeless population for our students and our families. We have students that are living with friends while their parents are living in parks right now. And so, the statistics that five thousand two hundred eighty-nine households in our Assembly District do not have Wi-Fi or internet is increasing dramatically because the prices are increasing as we see all over. And so, I would like to look at us as well following suit with a letter, like Sayev Alhambra and Dwardy, Rose Need, some of the other cities in our Assembly District, to also write to our supervisors and to our politicians to help support.
So, you're asking for, to agendize a discussion of that, right?
And then an action item to also send.
Would, would we want to have a, a letter prepared for, for that discussion?
I think that's the wise way.
Yes.
It's a way to do it.
Worse with it.
Yeah.
We are part of, I mean, even though we are an affluent area, we are part of Pasadena Unified School District, which is not. It's a Title I school district.
And it's important for us to support our community partners because they support us in, in our hard times as well. So, that's.
And we're assuming that our students are, are affluent and we're not. That's not true.
And I would like to propose a standing agenda item. And that standing agenda item would be to have at every council meeting, a quick update on the library renovations. Just to keep everyone honest, to see where we are on the timeline. It doesn't have to be PowerPoint, long presentation. And I'm, I'm picturing sometimes it's from Deputy Director Yanez, sometimes it's from Library Reagan, sometimes it could be from Chris Semino, maybe even the city manager. But I think it's important for the community to be apprised as to the the trajectory and the, what's been getting done on this project. I know we get it, we do that in the Library Board of Trustees meeting, but I think it's, it's important for us as the council and the residents to hear it as well.
Great.
That's all I have. Does, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn to our next regular meeting.
No, I want to stay here with all of you right now. No.